Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November 10th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has the dog for today.
Our featured Dog of the Week is a German Shepherd mix. He's about a year, year and a half old. He was found in Wellington. Great dog. He's neutered. He'll be available for adoption on Saturday, November 13th at 3 o'clock. Really friendly, laid-back dog. So if you're interested, stop in and see us. And if he's not a great type of dog for you, we've got plenty more, correct, Jack?
The more you see of it, the better it looks. Man, I thought you'd like that. Okay. I want to welcome to our meeting this morning newly-elected Commissioner Tom Williams, who will be taking my seat. Tom, will you stand up? Did he step out? Oh, there you are. Welcome. We're glad you're here this morning. Okay, Teresa?
Our budget hearings will start at 9:45, first with the Sheriff, 10:05 Board of Elections, 10:25 Veterans, 10:45 OSU, 11 o'clock Soil and Water, and 11:15 Common Pleas. Under Resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No investments, appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a few personnel actions at Golden Acres, the Baskiel Bridge, Job and Family Services, potential new hires that I would like to talk with the Board about. Also, I want to have a, which may be a lengthy discussion on where we're at with the negotiations with United Auto Workers of America representing Department of Job and Family Services, an update on our position with the State Employment Relations Board, and our case with the United Steel Workers of America, and the ongoing negotiations with some of the United Steel Workers of America bargaining units, and the Teamsters bargaining units.
Oh, what fun.
And so those discussions are allowed to take place in executive session, so at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session to discuss those matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
Under Job and Family, authorize maintenance and support agreement with CGI Technologies and Solutions, Inc. in the amount of $104,136 for support of applications, software and software updates of the Document Imaging Department effective January 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2011, and authorize Director to execute amendment for changes in programming on behalf of Board of Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Transit, approve an enter and MOU with Calhoun and Erie County Commissioners for Phase Two of the West Shore Corridor Transportation Project. In order to complete Phase One and the alternate analysis, continue collaboration efforts, recommend land use planning, zoning, and economic investment strategies, expand public involvement and participation, and provide necessary local match funding.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Approve an enter and MOU with the City of Vermillion to provide transit services for Vermillion, Brown Hill Township, Mercy Hospital, Cleveland Clinic, effective January 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2011. Services will be Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and the City of Vermillion will provide county with 7,500 to be used by the transit to match grant funds, and no county general funds will be used.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Vermillion.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Since we have a long morning this morning, I will reserve comment. I would also like to modify my request for the executive session to include a potential sale of real estate that I'd like to talk to the Board about, which is also an allowable subject, other than that of yield. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I also have a matter that involves potential sale and/or purchase of real estate that I would like, excuse me, to discuss with the Commissioners in the executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Well, last week I met with Habitat for Humanity. They are going to be having an open house at their 40th house that they've built. It is in Alariah at 7:30, 18th Street. They do look for volunteers on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays, and I volunteer to do some painting over there on this house when they're ready for painting. And on Saturdays, they also ask for anybody that's interested in donating food for the workers there, up to about 20 to 25 people. So if you're interested in either volunteering or donating food to those people working over there for that great cause, let me know, and we'll let you know how to get ahold of them. Saturday, I judged the chili cook-off at Amvets in Alariah, and it ended up being a white chicken chili. It had corn in it. It was really, really good. And so that was really nice. Sunday, I attended the Veterans Day Dinner at American Legion in Amherst, and actually Joe Quazura was the speaker there, and he always does a great job. And then this Thursday is Veterans Day, and we are closed. The offices are closed here. So I'll be at, in Amherst. They're gonna be having a Veterans Day donating, or a memorial stone in Amherst that they're gonna be dedicating, so I'll be attending that. And today and tomorrow at Liberty Ford in Vermillion, if you're a veteran, you can go down there, and they will wash your car for free. So I think that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Had the opportunity to attend Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Volunteer Recognition Dinner. Congratulations to Howard Marusa, who was given their Volunteer of the Year. They do a very nice job. It was a nice turnout. And then El Centro had their annual dinner. They're doing a great job raising money. It's a one and a half million dollar capital campaign, and probably one of the worst economic times we've ever seen, and they've raised over a million dollars for their new facility on Pearl Avenue and East 28th in the City of Lorraine. Very nice event also. End of my report.
Last evening, thanks to the Chronicle for the news of the Miami Glee Club performing at St. Joseph's in Avon Lake, I went to hear these young men sing. They were fantastic. It was a really nice treat. I have a matter that I would like to bring up for discussion, or non-discussion, as the case may be. Earlier this year, I asked Jerry Ennis to prepare a schedule of what the Commissioners would need to do if we were to consider enacting a sales tax, because there are certain sections of the Highway Revised Code that we must adhere to, and there are certain publication notices and public hearings that we must schedule. Jerry put together the timeframes for us for different sections of the code, and today is the last day for us to take any action if we would like to hold public hearings and consider a sales tax for the year 2010. We must adopt a resolution relating to tax in order to place the first publication in the paper on the 21st of this month. So I would like to offer some suggestions about this for discussion. The Commissioner's chief job, as I see it, is to see that all county departments are properly funded. It's apparent to me, based on the cutbacks and layoffs that have occurred over the past four years, that the county needs additional income. If all we are going to do is to address the state mandates, I don't believe that's very helpful to our county as a whole. And frankly, why would we even need Commissioners if all we do is to pass through the income that the state sends to us and give it to whatever departments are mandated? By mandated departments, I'm talking about courts, the Board of Elections, and a few others. There are certainly some functions that we provide and that we work with and for that provide necessary services to our citizenry. Of particular and special interest to me is that of public transportation. I have long been a supporter of Lorraine County Transit and the services that they provide, which right now are pretty negligible because we don't have any monies to make the transportation in Lorraine County grow. Last, I believe it was last week, or the week before, John Hart from ODOT III came to see us and talked to us about what was available with the 150 million, I believe. It was some fantastic amount that was being made available from the Ohio Department of Transportation. And then there was a list of where the first set of monies was going to go, all to entities that already have a sales tax in place. And I pointed out the almost three-quarters of a million dollars that Lake County was going to get. And we are comparative in size with population and boundaries with Lake County, but because we don't have a sales tax, we're like the poor stepchild. And I think that's totally unfair, and I said it then. I also attended a meeting sponsored by the Ohio Department of Transportation in Cleveland last Wednesday evening, and they asked for public comment. And I also told them there that I thought that we needed operational dollars, but it was said here. We asked John to relay that message, and I wrote it in a comment there, and I said, it's just totally unfair that just because we don't have a tax, we don't get operational dollars. But we are not the decision-makers in that. And to try to enhance what we do in Lorraine County, a group of us are working on a survey with Leadership Lorraine County to be presented to the public, and that will be going out within the next month or so. We're not hiding from the public. If we are taking any action on this, we need public support for this, and in my opinion, we are doing it for the public. But if you have less money, you get less service. And finally, Father Charlie from St. Mary's Parish in Alariah has been working on a Catholic charities assessment, a draft of same, and he asked me to comment on this. They are going to present it to the bishop. This is the Catholic parishes in Alariah. And so I read the 25-page report. It was worked on, a number of people worked on the committee, and then there were about just a little less than 100 people who accessed the information in the report. And one of my comments to him was, throughout this study, there are many references to public transportation, the lack of same, or the need for more and better public transportation. I have highlighted 21 such references. My interest in this is direct since Lorraine County Transit, for a number of years, has been directly funded by the Commissioners out of the General Fund. The reduction in public transit is a direct result of our diminishing General Fund dollars at this point. I think we can make a good case for our need. I know that times are tough. They're tough for everyone, but if you can't get to where you need to go, especially to jobs, it's a problem. So anyway, we have some public hearings scheduled, and you're going to hear more about, I believe, about the needs for these various departments. I'm not gonna touch on the need for the Sheriff's Department, because he's going to tell you about his need himself. He's sitting right here, and if anybody was awake during the last sales tax issue for, it was all about public safety. So maybe this is not the time, but I am exiting December 31st, and I've been here for 20 years. I have seen many things come and go from Lorraine County. We have a wonderful county. We have a lot of good things in place, but you can't operate without money. So I'm putting that pitch forward, and at this point in time, I would like to defer, unless my Commissioners have something to say, I would like to start with the budget hearings, and before we call on the first person, I would like to ask Mr. Cordez to give a little overview of the budget hearings and our money situation, so to speak.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I can certainly start, and then I'll have the Budget Director join us at the podium. In fact, Lisa, why don't you just come up now, and we can go over a few things. The Board has been presented with some data over the last few weeks, as we started wrestling with the process of 2011 expenditures. Earlier in the year, when we first prepared the 2010 budget, the forecast wasn't as good as it is right now. Between the cost savings measures that we took beginning in 2008, stronger measures in 2009, and more tightening going into 2010, through the course of this year, have started to produce some real results on the bottom line. We've challenged every expense. We've deferred maintenance on our capital assets. We've deferred purchase of capital assets. We've done in-house repairs and used as much in-house staff and extended our resources to the very limits, trying to control cost. We also had a lot of trailing costs in 2009 for a significant amount of layoffs that we no longer are paying as much money for on those trailing costs. We've also seen some upticks in a few things, like reimbursement for engine defense from the state, and a couple other places that we didn't anticipate some revenue from. Also, there was a tightening of the belt in a lot of the departments, even more so for 2010, which have allowed us now to be in a better position than we were coming into 2010 with regard to our ability to begin our budget in 2011. And I think you'll see that our bottom line, and it was necessary to get there, has improved by a couple million dollars. We brought back some advances that we had out there. We refinanced some sewer projects to draw money out of those capital projects. We brought back the remainder of funds that were lingering from the Justice Center project. We're seeing significant savings from our energy conservation upgrades that we did a couple years ago. All of these things take time. We don't produce savings immediately. It sometimes takes years before we start seeing real dramatic results from that. We started seeing them this spring, and looking at different projections. And even going into this fall, they got better and better. Now, we're not out of the woods. We're very far from being out of the woods. We're dealing with 2011 right now, but obviously, you know, we're gonna try to balance 2011 with almost $7 million worth of retained revenues from the last sales tax that'll balance 2011's budget, but will not be available for 2012's budget. So that's something that has to be analyzed, and decisions need to be made with regard to what we do in 2011 so we can support 2012. You have some breakdowns and specific line items. You'll see where there's been some reductions. Property taxes down. Obviously, you know, things were reassessed, and a lot of property values fell.
Well, Jim, basically, not to belabor the point, though, based on our numbers, our expenditures were down $1.6 million approximately through September of 2010.
Yes.
And our revenues were down a little bit over $1.4 million for the year. We also took a slash. The Budget Commission lowered our tax certificate in February by half a million dollars, giving us our projected shortfall of revenues of about $2 million. But through the cost savings we've done, the jail, because of the uptick in sales tax, were better than half a million dollars, less than we had to give them to fulfill that. I'll let the Sheriff talk about that. We closed our office services, which saved us $113,000. We're returning from our departments, the Commissioners' Department, $200,000, and I'll explain how we did all those things. Maintenance, $300,000. Custodial, $195,000. Now, that maintenance and custodial are basically based on past layoffs, less personnel. Telecommunications, one less person. Our utilities, because of the energy savings that you talked about earlier. And hospitalization, $395,000, and that's based on monies we didn't expend from doing the healthcare holiday early in the year to bolster our revenues.
Right. The healthcare holiday was, to the General Fund, was worth a total of about $1.5 million. That's how much we've still retained that we haven't used.
Correct. So return from Commissioners' Department is almost $1.6 million. And then unspent funding, we didn't do our capital improvements at all, which is not good to do in the long term. We have problems with roofs, and we have problems with parking garages, and that's gonna have to be addressed. And Jim and I talked about that here today, actually, if need be, having to go out and bond those repairs to get them completed. Less cost and unemployment, because our time's running out on that.
Correct.
From the past layoffs. Professional and consulting services, $525,000, because we didn't do a lot of things this year based on the economy. Economic projects, $75,000 saved. Is that gonna work through the end of the year, you believe, or is that just through?
I think we'll probably see about 55 or 60, but we have a couple things in the queue, but we're gonna see good savings on that.
Then our budget stabilization, which is always our set aside in case the jail had more issues, that didn't need to be expended. And then on compliance issues, $150,000. And how we were able to accomplish that goes back to when this Board first came in. In 2004, the General Fund departments of the Commissioners had 113 employees. As of this date right now, we now have 78 employees doing the same Commissioners' work. We're down 35 employees. So these cost savings were achieved through half a dozen years of cutting back. So I mean...
Let me add to your bottom line, Commissioner. Our employees are working full eight-hour days.
Right.
Okay? So their payday, their workday, which was, you know, almost a 13% increase in productivity from the remaining workforce. So not only did we reduce the workforce, but we got more productivity out of the existing workforce.
And explain what you mean by working full.
Well, we eliminated some of the benefits. Two of those were paid breaks and partially-paid lunch hour, in order to achieve more outcome from fewer people. You know, when they say do more with less, if you're doing your job already, the only thing you can do with less is less. So you gotta figure out a way of getting more from the reduced resources, and that was one of the avenues that we took.
But Jim, also, to stop you, though, being down 35 employees, we are doing less with less.
Oh, there is, yeah, we're doing well.
We're making it.
We're getting by.
Right.
But things are slower, and there's been some frustration on the Board members' part because things are slower, and we've asked for patience, because we don't have the amount of staff necessary to respond as quickly to different situations as we once did. But we're getting it done, but it's been delayed, and I know that a couple of the Commissioners sometimes get frustrated with that.
It's an understatement.
As we've seen last week.
I just wanted to put that together, so everybody understood just where we were at in the last six years, when people say government isn't doing their job, and with Commissioner Blair bringing up the sales tax issue, we have cut an almost a third of our workforce here. And we're not mandated services like the Sheriff in jail, not to compare to those in the courts, but I mean, we've been holding back on our capital expenses, and as we...
Go ahead, Commissioner. I was gonna say, but we can only control our department. We can't mandate that the other departments and other elected officials follow our lead on these certain items, like the eight-hour workdays and things like that. So I mean, we can do what we can do, and if people don't follow by example, then we're hanging out there by ourselves, cutting costs, and it's not really doing anything, because we're a drop in the bucket compared to the rest of the county departments.
I think, Commissioner, that's gotta play out through the budget hearings, what they've done for savings and stuff, 'cause I know the Sheriff and the Jokes, I talk to them a lot, on what's been cut back in the layoffs that he's implemented to save on his budget this year. Once said a layoff was around $300,000, correct, Sheriff? Okay. So I mean, I don't wanna paint that prior to going through...
I'm not pointing at any specific department or elected official. I'm just saying, in general, we are, you know, in perspective, not that large. I mean, 70% of our budget, over 70, is judicial. We're just legislative, so...
The only thing we can do is demonstrate that we're willing to take whatever measures are necessary under our jurisdictional control to make the resources go as far as possible. And that's very accurate. We can set the example. We cannot demand that everybody else follow that example.
Okay, does Lisa get to talk now?
Whenever you'd like to allow her to...
You're in charge, Commish.
Oh, really?
Yeah, for another couple weeks.
Lisa, would you like to talk about our projections for next year?
I don't know. What do you want to hear, Commissioners?
Well, I got frustrated with Lisa this morning, not her specifically, just the numbers itself. You know, there was a couple months ago or so, I was quoting the paper that we were gonna be short $2 million for this year, and then, you know, a few months later, then I find out we got a $3.5 million carryover. Now, we're showing a $6 million carryover. So I know it's the Budget Commission, and everybody sat down and came up with numbers, but getting really frustrated, trying to make decisions based on the numbers fluctuating so much in just a short amount of time.
I think that, and if I may add to that, those were our numbers coming into the year.
Exactly.
So you were, that was the things we discussed, and actually, it looked like we were gonna have a good shortage going into 2011. It was really hard to predict a lot of the cost-saving measures that we took in 2000, early, late 2008, 2009, and the results that were gonna come from them. Plus, we rearranged a lot of financing on outstanding, I'm gonna call them IOUs, to the General Fund, to get them bonded out and projects closed out, and return the working capital, so to speak, to the General Fund. As Commissioner Blair alluded to earlier, we don't have the money any longer, though, to go out there and get 80% money with 20% money. We've pulled all of that money back from all of that programming to shore up our budget and to have some of this carryover to support the 2011 needs. So, Commissioner, I think that we were all in the same position with you, coming into this year, what we were looking at, and some fresher information became available. I actually think you were a little bit misquoted, too, when our article came out. We were talking about a worst-case scenario, so...
Well, still, our revenue numbers show we're down $1.4 million, so we weren't that far off.
Right.
Half a million bucks, but not that half a million dollars isn't a lot of money, but in the scheme of our entire budget, you know, the revenue was still down, so...
Okay.
Budget Director?
Sure. Do you want to talk about, we had a meeting with the Budget Commission last Friday.
Can you explain who the Budget Commission is, so they understand it's not just the Commissioners deciding what the number is?
Yeah, the Budget Commission is made up of the auditors, the auditor, the treasurer, and the county prosecutor. They oversee all of the budgets for all the entities within the county. They make sure that our budget pretty much is in balance versus our appropriations versus our revenues. We had a very productive meeting with them last Friday. We made any adjustments that needed to be done for projected revenue for 2010, to make sure everything was in line. We also made some adjustments for the estimates that were submitted for the 2011. We came up with a $6 million carryover at the end of the year. That's an estimated number. We're all very comfortable with that number. Could fluctuate a little bit. On 2010 projected revenue versus our 2011 estimated revenue, we're looking at a shortfall of $3.6 million less revenue next year, which means going into 2012 is gonna be a problem for the Board, trying to balance a budget. is going to be a problem for the board, trying to balance the budget. I can give you some highlights on where the, the falls are going to be.
Please.
We're looking at local government, quite possibly losing a million dollars on that next year.
Or more.
Or more, depending on how the governor chooses to...
Well, with, with regard to local, local government revenue funds, I think we need to point out that we need some, there needs to be some additional legislative moves, because there's no money right now dedicated towards providing that local government money in the next state's fiscal budget. And also, the, the, the cat tax, which we was make whole through two thousand and ten, and then was supposed to be on a declining scale from two thousand and ten, I believe, into two thousand seventeen or eighteen. They have not come up with a, with a, a schedule to do the declining scale to, to take us off of the cat tax. We may not even see that revenue either in two thousand, sometime in the state budgets, when they do their budgets mid-year. It's very difficult for us now with regard to those two issues, because we won't know anything until July or August. So whether you prepare for them or you don't prepare for them, they're not something that you've got to really think about. All indications are that we're going to see at least a twenty-five to fifty percent cut in local government revenues, as the state wrestles with their budget shortfalls. I don't have a crystal ball. I can't give you a good number, but I think it's unrealistic to believe that we're not going to see cuts in, in those areas.
Go ahead.
Okay. Interest income from the treasurer, he just decreased his estimate for next year. We're expecting to bring in approximately two point one this year, next year, one point seven, which is four hundred thousand dollars less.
Interest income?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to try and go over some of the big ones here. The Board of Elections, they do some, and Paul Adams can probably talk more about this, but they charge back to the outside entities for special elections and whatnot. And this year, they brought in about six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and next year, we're estimating three hundred thousand dollars. So that's a big chunk of change right there. Sales tax, we are slated to bring in about fourteen point six million this year. Our estimate next year is fourteen point four, which is, equates to about one point two million a month, provided that the trend stays where it is right now. Defense of indigence, we are on track to bring in about seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Next year, our estimate is six hundred thousand dollars. And the auditor and treasurer's collection fees, those are combined almost over two hundred thousand dollars less. We're expecting to bring in next year. Those are kind of like the big chunks of change that we all went over. Any questions? I can...
Any questions, Commissioners?
That's about three point four million dollars, though.
And, right.
Less than what we're receiving this year.
Exactly.
But these numbers can change, just like our other numbers have changed. I, I'm not putting a lot of stock in them. Like, I don't put stock in polls. I'm not putting stock in crystal balls as far as these numbers and projections go either. I mean, interest income, we don't know. You know, the feds could raise the rate, and then we could start getting more money on our interest. We don't know about local government funds, you know?
Oh, I think we do know about local government funds.
Not for sure.
The state of Ohio, they're going to take some from local government. I serve with our state organization, and the talk is up to a twenty-five percent cut. I mean, those are real numbers that people talk about.
And they went by a poll, and people did a poll and said, "Yeah, they, instead of cutting from this or that, they, they want to cut from local government fund." People don't even know what a local government fund is. They don't realize that it, it affects their services.
Well, we know, because they took a, a big hit from us.
Yeah, three point five million dollars in two thousand and seven.
You, you haven't forgotten that.
No, I'm never going to forget that number.
You see it in your sleep. Do, we have other questions for Lisa?
Not currently.
Okay. Then I think we should proceed to the people who are listed, because we're a little behind time. So, thanks, Lisa.
You are very welcome.
Sheriff Stamatoy, we'd like to hear from you. Morning, Sheriff.
Guess I'm going first, huh?
You're the lucky one.
And under budget hearings, it says you're number one.
I brought my backup, my captain, but I see he's left the room already.
Yeah, Draz ran away.
He's the only captain I got left.
He's scared.
As you know, Commissioners, I just wanted to mention that we're mourning the death of one of our officers from the Drug Task Force, first of all, which has been a rough week for all of us. But I, I have had some time to prepare some of this. As you know, I sent over my budget request, which I know the Budget Director, Lisa Hope, likes to say is a wish list, and I do agree with her on that. You know, obviously, asking to bring back all my people. I don't expect that to happen, and I understand, you know, the tough economic times that are right now. But obviously, as the head of the sheriff's office, I have to ask for the people back, and just like anybody else, I'm sure would. And I did explain some of the, some of the dilemmas that we have, and some of the cuts that we've made in that letter, and some of the duties that we also have. As you know, we've tried to also apply for as many grants and equipment and training that we could get money-wise. I know some of those grants come with the, you know, they're only for a few years, and then you've got to pick them up afterwards. So those are kind of tough, because it's hard to project what monies are going to be coming in in the future. But as you know, I asked for my general fund, seven million, five hundred and twelve thousand for two thousand and eleven, and then for the jail, I asked for about thirteen nine. And like I say, I know realistically that's not going to happen. As you know, I've laid off twenty people in two thousand and nine, which was twenty deputies. And also, this year, because the budget was running behind and running to the red, I had to make some more tough decisions, and, and I did come back and ask the Commissioners for more money, and was told no, and I understand the reasoning why. So I ended up laying off two of the captains and one of the secretaries that I had, which was two fundings from the jail, and then two fundings, or one funding from the general fund, which was one of the captains. I can tell you presently right now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the general fund money, which obviously pays for all the deputies and some of the administrative people over there, but it's mostly the deputies. And obviously, we've got the civil office, too. I've got two vehicle maintenance guys, and some typists in the, in the civil office and an office manager. For the last two years, I've been given five million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight. Obviously, I've lived within that budget, and this year, making a few more cuts, I can tell you that we will be turning back some money. It won't be a whole lot, but we'll be turning some back from the general fund, just through, just everything that we've been watching. Overtime's a big one. I've, pretty much, for the law enforcement division, there, there is no overtime, unless it's an extreme emergency. I've been down to one deputy at a time, where we might have to call somebody in for four hours. The problem we have there is, obviously, you know, is I have a sergeant and two deputies that are covering about three hundred and fifty square, three hundred and fifty-seven square miles in this county, which is a big area. As you know, going from Columbia over to Brownhelm, or going down to Rochester, it can take you at least a half an hour when you're going code three, flasher and siren. So, the big dilemma that we have nowadays, with the deputies especially, is safety for the citizens and also safety for them. One big dilemma I have is when we have two or three serious calls that come in at one time. I guess my question is, which one do you answer first? And, and my sergeant has to make a split-second decision at that point. Do you go to a domestic, or do you go to a burglar in progress? And obviously, something could happen bad at either one of those, and if you make the wrong guess, then somebody's, you know, Monday morning quarterback's going to be second-guessing you, "Why didn't you go to that call instead of this call?" So it's, it's a tough decision to make when you're dealing with people's lives that way. But out of that, the, the general fund, we have a total of sixty-six people that are paid out of the general fund, and then obviously, we have five that are paid by other sources. And obviously, through the Commissioners, we've been able to get two for the environmental, out of the solid waste. We've got one weight-scale guy that's being paid by the engineer. I have an officer at the GAVS, a school resource officer, who's being paid by the school nine months out of the year. And then we have a New Russia township deputy who is being fully funded by New Russia, and they also bought a cruiser for that officer. And then my dare officer, who only, he does that part-time, obviously, and he's a road deputy, he also follows up some cases in the detective bureau. But about twenty thousand dollars of his salary is paid by the Attorney General's office.
Well, Phil, don't we also have Columbia Township also has partial employee?
Yeah. What that is, though, that's obviously like an extra detail.
Okay.
And what it is, is yes, Columbia has contracted with us for some, you know, like three days of patrol, about twenty-four hours. And Eaton Township has also contracted with us for some extra service, too. So that, that is, you know, is going on. Where the townships, obviously, are trying to help themselves out, too, and they understand that they have to do that. But we're down to sixteen road deputies right now, which, when you average it out, it comes out to five on each shift, but you never have five on each shift, because as you know, you've got days off and vacations and bonus time and whatever. And, and I do deal with five different bargaining units at the sheriff's office. And, you know, I'm not anti-union at all. I was in the union my whole self. But you do have to deal with a lot of issues that are contractual, as you know. Like, you know, Administrator Cortez was mentioning about this eight hours. I mean, I understand that process, but I only actually have six people that are non-union out of that group in the general fund process. The rest of them are all in bargaining units. So obviously, something like that would have to be bargained. And they do have one thing in their contract, which is a good thing, and it's, they don't get paid fifteen minutes prior to working for any type of overtime, if we tell them, "Hey, you're here, so you need to do this," or fifteen minutes after. So if a deputy gets a call, and he works till, he's supposed to get off at seven, he works till seven fifteen, he comes in, he doesn't get paid for that time, but he was actually still working. So that, that's a benefit that we have that way. That works out pretty good. As far as my civil office goes, they, that pretty much, and I was here before, as you know, for the fines and fees that are collected, they're, they're pretty much self-paid for themselves over there. As you know, they brought in about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this past year in fines and costs. And I can tell you that there's not any good news on the foreclosure front. I talked to Lieutenant Davis and my office manager, Mary O'Channis. I can tell you, to date, we have two thousand three hundred and forty-four foreclosures, and obviously, the end of the year's not here yet. So we're running about two hundred and fifty-five more than we were last year. That's not a good record that you want to break. Obviously, we were hoping that would come in lower. But we had two thousand and eighty-nine filed in two thousand and nine. My communications officers, I have eight of them. At one time, I had ten, and we have one sergeant there, too. So I can tell you that, at one point, we had, and this is when my predecessor was there, also Sheriff Mahoney, we had two hundred and sixty employees at the sheriff's office at one time. We're down right now to two hundred and thirty-one. And as you know, we have, we have mandated duties also. And, and I know the County Commissioners Association as a whole, against the eighty-eight sheriffs in the county, you know, they always like to say, "Well, law enforcement isn't mandated." But I did talk to your, your President Larry Long, and like he says, he doesn't believe any commissioner, doesn't believe that the sheriff needs some type of law enforcement response, because you're still dealing with fifty-five to sixty thousand people that live in those townships.
Including me.
Yeah, that's including Commissioner Blair, and myself. I live in a township myself. But that, that is definitely a, a needed service when you need it. And like I always said, nobody needs the police, or nobody needs the sheriff until they need them.
That's right.
And then they need them right now.
I betcha.
I don't want to wait a half an hour, because minutes seem like hours when you're waiting for somebody to arrive, an ambulance or a police officer to come to your aid. So that's, like I say, nobody needs them until they need them, and then that's the way it is. We do have seven hundred and seven registered sex offenders in this county. That's another record you hope you don't break. And obviously, some counties that are a lot bigger than us, Kyle Hoga and Franklin, Montgomery, have a lot more. But these are, that's a mandated duty that we obviously have to check on. The Drug Task Force, which you know, the Chief Deputy Kavanaugh oversees, we have thirteen agents there, but I actually have Lieutenant Silva and Todd Wegman, who are still deputies under the sheriff's office that are assigned over there right now. So their funding is not coming out of my general fund money. But push comes to shove, as you know, his finances are kind of dwindling over there. He's still at a millage rate from nineteen eighty-two, I believe, which has never been renewed. So at some point, I know we're going to have to address the Drug Task Force, which, you know, does a lot of work inside the cities themselves, that assist them. But I just, I mean, I know I want to leave some things for, questions for you, but obviously, the sheriff does have a big budget. You know, our jail, as you know, is running roughly about twelve and a half million in the general fund, probably. I had David O'Connor dig up some stats for me. From two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, we averaged about six point three million in the general fund. And as you know, for the last couple of years, we've been down to five point two. And, and that's due to some layoffs and things of that, or that we've managed to do that. But one thing we are, and I think a lot of people don't realize, is that we are there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Now, some of the administrative staff goes home at four thirty, five o'clock, but I can tell you, all the corrections officers, the deputies, the record room, and everything else is running constantly. And, and I know you understand that process, that even our buildings age three days to the one that maybe is just working eight to four, nine to five, because you can shut the lights off. And, but unfortunately, at our, our building, things are still running constantly. And as County Administrator Cortez knows, that Lieutenant Hammond, he does a very fine job of trying to cut costs in the jail. And, and I give him all the credit this year, from taking that budget from twelve-five, and really, that's a mandated duty of a sheriff. And, you know, a lot of people think, "Well, just, you know, the general fund got hit." Well, it didn't. We cut back in the jail, I can tell you tremendously. We've cut about a half a million dollars off of that budget. We're probably going to come in around eleven nine this year. And, you know, we've been, and it's not a good thing, and believe me, you know the corrections union, they're not happy about some of the changes that we've made. We've, we've actually, don't have a minimum manpower there anymore. We used to have a policy where we had a minimum manpower. They had eighteen officers on night shift. They would have twenty-something on days. And they are needed, I can tell you that. You know, we have eleven different pot areas in that jail that we have to guard these inmates in. And we have some bad actors in there, as you know. We have several in there, and, and they're in there mostly from the cities, and we all know that, too. We've got a lot of murders in there and a lot of problem people. But they deal with them very well. And, you know, we're dealing with five different municipal courts, besides, you know, the county judges, too. So even with the court guys, I have eleven of them that are transporting inmates, when I probably should have fourteen to sixteen guys. It's not, this is not all they do. They do extraditions. During the daytime, we have an inmate go to the hospital. They guard him in the hospital. There's thirty-one state prisons throughout this state that we transport inmates to and bring them back. It isn't just all out of LCI and GCI. They classify them here, and then they ship them to another institution. So some of these guys got two or three cases pending. So whenever they come up for a case again, we've got to get on and pick them up, bring them back, keep them in our jail. And, you know, we're trying to work with the state on some of these issues, because, you know, we're trying to cut costs that way. And obviously, as you know, the state's trying to push everybody out of their system and pushing down on the county systems. And every sheriff in the state is very concerned about that, as I'm sure the county Commissioners are, too. I call it, "Let me take the monkey off my back and put it on yours." But somebody's going to pay, and it's the taxpayers that pay for all this in the end.
Sheriff, what was the number that the state corrections gentleman said they wanted to get out of state jails? It was a phenomenal amount of money, a phenomenal amount of people.
Yeah, they, they, I believe they have about fifty-two thousand. They want to go down to probably like forty-eight this year, and even lower than that.
Three or four thousand less, either for leasing early or sending them back down to the local county jails, too.
Right. And you can put people on probation and parole, but when they violate it, again, they get locked up again, and they end up in the county jails. And then you run the process again of going through that, and, you know, can they end up back in the prison system eventually? Yeah, but I can tell you, it takes a while. As you know, we've got inmates in the jail, they're, they're five years. And, and I'm not faulting the judges or the prosecutor, but I, you know, I just tell them, "Hey, we need to move a little quicker on some of this processes." And I know sometimes it's very complicated, when you've got all these attorneys involved in this process.
While you're talking about judges and fines and fees and things like that, our solid waste deputies, we have two of them, and they've been doing a really good job, from what I've been told. We also got a letter from Steve Ba-, or Keith Bailey, who is our director over at Solid Waste, and he said, "The problem is the courts and prosecutors are letting these individuals off the hook." In two thousand and nine, the judges and prosecutors saw fit to waive a half a million dollars in potential fines. And I don't know who, who would have received those funds, if it would have been us or the cities, but somebody is dropping the ball.
It would have been us, and the, it's, it's on my desk. I have now received a list of each jurisdiction, each case.
Was it a half a million dollars that we could have gotten from these cases?
I believe it exceeds that.
See?
That's money that we could have used to defray other general fund expenses, or it could have been bifurcated. It could have, we could have picked up some of the reimbursement for the salaries we're currently paying for solid waste, to pay for those deputies, or we could have used it to put additional deputies on the road.
Right. It says, "Most of the units across the state have been, become self-supporting from these fines levied by the courts." So we need to definitely pursue that, and, I mean, oh, and another thing, too, I, speaking of fines and fees, I met with Greg Wiley from the APL yesterday, and I think he was talking about Minnesota, but a fee, the fine for not having a dog license there is a thousand dollars. So they're, they have sheriffs, they're paying sheriff's deputies out of their dog licenses or dog fine fees. So you might want to be, I don't know who sets the fees for that, but...
We do.
We do, for the fines for the...
He said yes.
Not having a license? Well, there you go.
All the things that don't count.
We'll just have do-, or sheriffs out there looking for dogs without tags. And, and you know what else it does besides helps the sheriffs out? We'll just have sheriffs out there looking for dogs without tags, and you know what else it does besides helps the sheriffs out? It also makes it so that there's hardly any dogs in the dog pound because they all have licenses. So they know, we know where to take the dog when we pick up a stray.
My current strategy and my direction from the board with regard to the wavering of fines and fees is to meet with those jurisdictions and have a discussion with them to see if we can't reach an understanding where they will not waiver those fines and fees so that we can provide for better services. I will say that most of those are being done in the urban areas. So I'll be visiting with some of those jurisdictions over the course of the next few weeks. And I'll report back here the success or lack thereof to this board, and then we can develop a secondary strategy if necessary.
Continue to do a good job, and what do you get for it?
Yeah, and if the county administrator would need any help from us, and I agree with him, you're dealing with five different municipal court jurisdictions when you're dealing with this. So, and I know some of their arguments going to be the old argument that you can't get blood out of a turnip because if some of these people don't have the money to pay the fines, they may end up in the jail anyways. They won't be paying ninety-four dollars a day to keep them there, but the ones you can collect, I agree.
Right, and as you know, Sheriff, you know, you come every year, you have the same amount. You have folks that we can't get fees from, and it just kind of rolls up, and everybody looks at that huge number and they go, oh, my God. But I think initially not even trying is accepting failure before we attempt to get any revenue from that, and we need to do that. And I appreciate that. Maybe we'll go as a team to those jurisdictions and have a discussion, or maybe Draz can go with me and we'll talk to him.
Now that he's back.
Intimidate him a little bit with some heat.
Now that he came back to help you after you're just about done. Sorry, Draz. We certainly need to, we certainly need to get that revenue. And if I may just say one thing, Jack has done a great job this year. You mentioned that earlier. And I was really surprised going over the numbers. It was very unexpected. About four or five weeks ago, when I was looking at the numbers, the amount of savings that we had in this money that we set aside to help support the jail operations and that it wasn't necessary. And it was one of those big smile days because that freed up some additional resources we didn't have before. So I really got to give kudos to Jack and what he's done and your entire staff out there.
Thank you, and I agree with you, County Administrator, that he's definitely an asset over there. He's the jail administrator, and he's done a great job. I just had him just, you know, rough out some things and just through the years, even the corrections training academy, where we have to send our officers when they're hired, they have to go to a three-week school. He's actually set that up with a tri-county type thing with Medina and Ashland and other ones, where we don't pay anything when we send our officers to these schools. So you know, we've realized savings over that. The inmate video visitation system that he had spearheaded and had installed, where we don't have to actually go down and bring these inmates back and forth for visitation. They do it right from the pods. That's been a tremendous save. We actually cut two corrections officers out from doing that job. The records division restructured that he did with County Administrator Cortez, where we actually had our corrections officers doing the clerical work. And you know, they were making like twenty bucks an hour, but we cut it down where they're making, you know, like twelve, thirteen bucks an hour maximum. So that was a tremendous savings there. The corporal rank that we instituted, we're not paying a sergeant, so now we have some corporals who are at a lesser pay, which works out even better for us. He suspended the minimum manpower requirements, and it's not a good thing because when you have eighteen people there that you need at positions, we've went as low as thirteen on night shift. Now, yeah, they're locked up and supposed to be sleeping, but we have open pod areas where, you know, these guys aren't.
Been there.
Yeah, the best people in the world, and they won't be targeted.
Just visited. I just visited. A tour, I took a tour.
And I'll tell you, one thing I can give credit to, to the probation department and Bart Holbar too, was we have this court expediter now who's Sue Smick. She works right out of our jail. She deals with all the muni courts and the county courts to try to set up the court supervisory lease system, the bonds. She'll even call these inmates and remind them that they have to go to court tomorrow. Because, you know, they're not the most organized people in the world, obviously.
The expediter came out of the study we went through, we went back on, you and I, and Draz went to Colorado, what, four years ago, five years ago?
But they ended up getting the grant for that, and that's been a huge plus because you figure fifty percent of these guys are showing up for court. Then normally, if they don't show up, the judge is putting the contempt warrant out for them. Now, we're going out looking for them and arresting them, going back into the system. Simple phone call by her, reminding them you got court tomorrow, they show up. So that's really been a tremendous help to us. We're closing some control booths at times on night shift. You know, we have a control booth, and then you have officers in both pods with the inmates. At times, one guy is just going to have to be the rover, and we close the control booth. Is that the most ideal situation? No, but it's just another cost measure that we've had to control. The physician's assistant that we hired, used to be a contract position. That has saved us a tremendous amount of money because they're almost like a doctor. He's made decisions that, well, this guy doesn't go to the hospital, which is saving us thousands of dollars. And I tell you, that nursing staff does a great job that we have out there because when corrections officers, when I was a policeman, you always had to make the decision, I'm not a doctor, and I'm not any type of medical person, you're deciding whether this guy goes to the hospital or not. You make the wrong decision, and the guy's having a heart attack, and he dies there, and now the county's got a huge liability that you didn't provide proper care to him. So that nursing staff, and you know, they're doing the EKGs in the jail, the sonograms for x-rays are coming right to the jail to do them instead of us taking them out and having a deputy transport them. That saved us tremendously. I mean, I can go on and on to the things that he's implemented, but he's done a fantastic job there. And I guess I would be remiss if I didn't ask, but I am going to ask you, that we have saved about a half a million dollars in the jail. What I'd like to do is maybe next year is you entertain a possibility of bringing some of the deputies back with some of that money. I know times are tough, I'm down twelve. If we can get four to six guys back, that can help us tremendously on the road.
I think that's on everybody's mind, Sheriff, as we're looking at cost savings.
Yeah, and you know, I understand, you guys have a lot of departments to deal with, you have a lot of issues and transportation issues and everything else. But I guess I'm just kind of a, just a sheriff here, and I don't have all the answers. I can guarantee you that. But I've always wondered that if I was a commissioner, I know it's easy for me to say this because I haven't sat in your seat. But I think, you know, we always talk about jobs and jobs and jobs. I think until you solidify the sheriff's office and law enforcement in this county, there is not going to be a whole lot of businesses that want to move in this area. And the townships have all the land, and eventually, that's where they're going to be building, and I understand that. And you know, with Oracle going in, you may not have as much annexation as you had in the past. But if we're going to have these businesses move in, I think we need to solidify our safety forces first. Because I can tell you, if I own a business, I'm going to look first to say, what kind of safety do they have? Do they have a fire department? Are the schools halfway decent there before they bring, because they have families that they're bringing into these institutions also. So I think if, we've got to solidify that first, and once you get that down, and I'm not saying give me all the money. That's not the answer. I know that. I will control my budget where I can.
Sheriff, though, that's almost got to be a cooperative effort between the townships and the commissioners, what we provide, and them finding a way to fund like New Russia's done in Columbia and Eaton to help to increase the police.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I think they do too. They understand that process, but.
I know you've been working on it for a couple of years. I've talked with Draz about it, and I've been out, when we talked with the one township trustee, he meed prior to the sales tax. And if that's not going anywhere forward, and we're looking at a significant drop in our revenues for two thousand and twelve, I mean, I think that's going to be very difficult.
Yeah, and we're still looking at police district, and you know that. We're still talking to the townships. And obviously, Columbia, I tell you, they're really doing a great job of looking at things. They may even put some type of a millage on to try to hire three full-time officers, so they're looking at that. But I know their argument, and I tell you, I have to agree with them to a certain extent, is what do they get for the money they pay now? And they don't, and I've told you this before, they don't use the jail a whole lot. We don't have a whole lot of sexual offenders that live in the townships. We don't have a lot of, you know, just the CCW permit holders and everything else. It just, they don't use those services as much as city people do. And sometimes the city people don't understand, these are services that you get from your sheriff's office. Yeah, we don't patrol your streets daily, but we do a lot of, the jail, ninety-eight percent of the people in the jail are from the cities and villages, not from the townships. So what they get for their buck, I say, is law enforcement.
Well, the issue being that you can't cut the jail because that's mandated because a quarter of a million of the population use it. And the other fifty thousand is a road patrol, which currently isn't mandated, and I serve on the CCAO, so that's always a discussion between Buckeye sheriffs and the county commissioners.
And I know that, but you know, it's not good for a commissioner to sit up there and say that they don't deserve any law enforcement protection, and I know you're not saying that.
I didn't say that, but I'm saying that's the concern we always have with the jail having to be operated.
Because I, and just my personal opinion is there's, you know, the townships are getting bigger as we go, and I think you're going to continue that. Because my argument also has been that people move out of cities because they want to live in it. They don't want to be annexed back in. I mean, I used to live in the city myself, and cities are great. When I live out in a township now, I like it where I'm at. But, and I don't want to be annexed in by Amherst or whoever.
Well, Jimmy Andrews is a great neighbor. That's why you like living there.
Yes, he is, so. But I'm going to continue to control my budget where I can. But I would wish that you would at least look at some of the general fund money so I can at least increase some of the law enforcement protection in this county.
I just want to say that I appreciate all that you've done to try to help, you know, stabilize the budget. You've done a fantastic job at the jail as well. But this last year, when everybody else took a cut, we did not cut your budget.
I understand that, but I was still running.
I know, but I'm just saying, everybody, we do have, we do feel that your department is very special and important and a priority. And that's why, when we cut everybody else's budget, we left yours alone because we, you know, we don't want to see any more sheriffs be cut. And you do a fantastic job, and hopefully, be able to get through next year. Next year, we'll be fine. I'm not so worried about next year, but two thousand and twelve is the year that I'm seriously concerned for.
Okay, Commissioner, and I applaud you for that. Once the sales tax monies were implemented, that you had put some of that away, and I think that obviously is going to help us for next year with the jail.
Yeah, that's what's going to save us next year, but we won't have that six, seven million dollars the following year.
I understand that.
That's the issue.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Draz.
Okay, now we'll hear from the Board of Elections, Paul Adams, Director. Sorry, we're running a little behind, but this is an educational process for all of us.
Important information.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me out here today. Wanted to just first go over, I guess, some of the cost savings measures we've made and highlight a few of good things that have been happening. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of bad things this morning, so want to go over those first, and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty details. First, I wanted to let the Commissioners know that just as Sheriff's Committee had mentioned him working with grants, we're trying to do the same thing. We don't have the kind of capability to get larger grants as other departments may, but every time an opportunity does come up, we take advantage of it. A great example of that is over the last year or so, we've taken advantage of ADA compliant grants, which we are now required to have all of our polling locations ADA compliant. We've been able to work with the Secretary of State to pay for all of those upgrades. So we've had some locations where this has amounted to four or five grand, where we've needed to spend to upgrade locations. This last, before this last election, we had two locations that still needed to be upgraded. That was Henrietta Township Hall and Pheasant Run Community Center down in La Grange. Both of those locations, we were able to get grants from the state to pay for, and they were completely covered by the grant, and we were able to get those ADA compliant. And in this election, this last election, we had, for the first time ever, all of our polling locations were ADA compliant. So that was something that we were able to do with grants. We're also working with the Secretary of State's office to get grants for our poll worker training and all the materials for poll worker training. Currently, we do get grants that does go into the general fund to pay for all of our training expenses. Basically, how that works is we pay for it out of our budget. So we pay out of our budget, the training expenses, the materials we use for class. We apply for the grant. It goes into the general fund. It doesn't necessarily come back to our budget, but you receive it back in that grant that we do have our staff work on to process. And we are getting additional grants for that. They've opened up a few more grants that we will be applying for next year to help offset the cost of poll worker training. A few other things that we've done, one of the bigger things that we've done this last year was we instituted a new absentee program. Now, just to give you a little bit of background information, in two thousand and eight, which was our last big election, our absentee department that handled almost forty thousand absentees for Lorain County mail, we had to run our absentee department twenty-four hours a day, and we had to have three shifts of people. So that was a large number of part-time staff that came in to assist functioning that department for well over a month. This last election, which in terms of election cycles, the last election we had is really second only to the presidential election. The gubernatorial general election is the largest election we have other than a presidential. In this election, because we instituted a new ordering system and a new absentee ballot system, first off, we ordered ballots on demand. So in the past, where we'd have to guess what the voter turnout was going to be in area and order more ballots than needed, this time, we ordered on demand, so we only ordered the exact number of ballots we needed for those areas. And we were able to cost, eliminate costs for labor. And the information that I provided to Lisa and your office as well shows that we saved in this election over twenty-three thousand dollars in labor alone. The ladies that work in our absentee department, we've actually decreased the size of that department, and they were provided significantly less part-time assistance, but they were still able to get the same job done because of the new system that we went to. Also, we have information I also provided shows kind of our staff cuts. The Board in the past has taken the position of, instead of making various cuts or salary cuts and that kind of options that I know other departments have, the Board of Elections has purely eliminated positions. In two thousand and seven, before the presidential election, there were twenty-eight people that were in our office working on a regular basis, regular staff members. Now, in two thousand and ten, there are twenty of us. So they reduced staff by eight individuals. In this last election, as I mentioned, being the largest election other than the presidential election, that staff reduction became very obvious. We were stretched, but we were still able to get the job done. And that's where I think, that's where I think the Board has decided in the past to make these reductions as far as we can go, to eliminate as many as we can until we get to the point to where we believe we can't possibly put on an election. Because the Board clearly understands that there are other departments, such as the sheriff's office that just spoke, and other departments certainly need the money, and we need to make as many cuts as we can. So I know there had been a request in the letter we got from Lisa about lunches and paid hours and that kind of option. And I will be relaying that information to our Board, which meets next Wednesday. But I did want the Commissioners to know that in the past, our, the Board's policy in the past has been just to completely eliminate positions. And then, like I said, since two thousand and seven, there have been eight of them that have been eliminated. The other thing is, as mentioned earlier, Lisa had mentioned with chargebacks. One of the things that we're going to work very hard to do is increase the amount of money that we can bring back in terms of chargebacks. Now, she had mentioned for next year, it's going to be a lot less. That has to do with the way chargebacks work, and it took me a while myself to understand how this whole system works with chargebacks. But in an even election year like we just had, this particular election year, we're not, we're not allowed to charge back many things. We can charge back advertising costs for the ballot language that goes in the newspaper. We can charge back for the ballots themselves. But beyond that, we can't charge back for much else. Next year, in an odd election year, there is a large amount of things that can be charged back, and we are looking to charge back as many of those as we can so that come two thousand and twelve, because it's always the next year that you get it, we're looking to provide as much as we can and maximize how much we can bring back in chargebacks for two thousand and twelve. One of those things is, and I actually got a number of calls from a lot of our municipalities and school districts this last year. In two thousand and seven, the General Assembly passed House Bill one ninety-nine, which increased the number of things that could be charged back. One of the big areas that changed was in terms of staff costs. In the past, the Board of Elections could only charge back for supplies or things that were needed specifically for that election. Now, after this House bill passed, in odd election years, the Board of Elections can charge back for what it calls intermittent employees. We call them part-time employees, seasonal help, and for any overtime that is paid for any of the staff members of the Board of Elections. That has not been fully taken advantage of in the past since this came into effect. And we're going to try to make that, to take advantage of that as much as we can. Now, typically, our office provides not overtime for our full-time employees. We typically provide comp time, compensation time to those individuals. After a conversation I had with Mr. Innis, that cannot be charged back to a community. So if we were going to try to charge back that additional cost, it would have to be in an overtime cost in order to charge back to those communities. So that's something else that I'd like you to consider when you're looking over our staff costs for the upcoming year, that a lot of that money can be brought back into the general fund for two thousand and twelve if we're able to charge it back. The first thing is certainly about eighty-five thousand dollars, which is typically what we spend for part-time seasonal labor, that for sure will be able to be brought back in, in chargebacks for two thousand and twelve. Because that we can clearly charge back according to House Bill one ninety-nine. Whether or not we have the funding available to provide the overtime to employees in order to make that a chargeback so that the Commissioners can get that money back, that is yet to be seen. But that's one of the reasons why you'll see in our current budget request, the amount in salaries, so that we can provide that. The next thing is, we are looking at trying to reduce costs in terms of just the number of precincts. Currently, we have two hundred and thirty-four precincts. On election day, we have almost fourteen hundred people that work the polls on election day. And that is a huge cost for our office, and we are looking, as more and more people decide now to vote via mail, that percentage continues to increase. We are recognizing that, and we will, the Board will be reviewing whether or not that means what percentage of precincts. We are recognizing that, and we will, the Board will be reviewing whether or not that means what percentage of precincts that we can eliminate, because now you're not going to have as many people voting at the polls, you're going to have more people voting via mail, so we can reduce that cost. Currently, we're looking at at least eliminating twelve precincts for 2012. That cost savings alone would be about sixteen thousand dollars if we were able to do that. Certainly, the next piece, as I kind of move into kind of our mandated costs and things that are going to happen next year for us, the next piece is, that makes it a little difficult for those precinct reductions, is next year, we have redistricting. And for the first time since nineteen ninety, the Board of Elections is going to be put in a very cramped schedule. Because in two thousand, when we had redistricting, the congressional lines and the House district lines that were drawn were prepared for the two thousand and two election. Well, two thousand and two was a mid-year midterm election, wasn't a presidential year, so the primary was in May. This time, we're going to get those lines sometime in the middle of this year. We're going to have to have them ready by November during the middle of an election, because it's going to be a presidential year. So we're going to have to have all of those lines and everything moved, prepared for people to circulate petitions, certify their elections, and get everything ready for the March primary of two thousand and twelve. So that's another reason why we are looking at increased staff costs. One of the things that we've had that's happened over the last few years is because of our staff reductions, we've lost an awful lot of experience. In two thousand, we had eight members of staff that knew and had done redistricting in the past. And as the Commissioners may know, currently, we don't have a GIS system. So that means we have to go through and manually move these individuals. It is a manual process. You take out a map, you lay it on a table, you see where those lines are. We actually have to have staff members go into our system, move whole street segments. They'll figure things out on, on notebooks, and that's how we do redistricting. In the past, the Board has looked to try and automate that system. But the problem is, in order to automate that system, it is going to cost us anywhere between seventy-five and eighty-five grand. And the Board does not believe we have that cost, that we have the ability to do that at this time. But because we don't have that ability, it is going to cost an awful lot of money in terms of additional labor to come in and make all this happen, especially in the middle of an election. The other thing I had also included in a packet that I had given to Lisa, which I believe all of you have, is just a number of the new requirements that we now have from the Secretary of State's office. Those include assessing our poll workers after an election. We're required now to assess every poll worker. So we're talking fourteen-hundred people have a little sheet that we have to fill out, go through, inspect everything that they had done at the polls, all while preparing for our official count, which happens just before Thanksgiving. So all of those things happening, it's pushed us to the point to where we can't possibly do it with the current staff we've had. We've had to bring in other people to assist with that because of that new requirement. The other thing we're looking at for two thousand and eleven is the upgrade to our election software. The current licenses and maintenance fees for our current software and election equipment was paid for by the Two Thousand Two Help America Vote Act. Secretary of State dispersed that money. All those costs were basically paid for by that money. Starting next year, that is going to begin to expire, and we're going to have to pay for that out of our budget. There is an upgrade that we can go to that will provide, I believe, a lot more security and a better election system for the county that we can go to next year. However, the licensing fees next year then would be fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars if we were to make that change. The one good thing that's happened is because of a lawsuit that was filed amongst other Boards of Elections and the Debold Corporation, we were provided a settlement check, which I've already handed over to the county, that provides us funding to upgrade that system, pay for all of the labor costs, all of the fees that would happen from the company coming in and actually doing the upgrade with us. The only cost that we would have would then be the ongoing licensing fees. If we don't have the ability to do that, each year that we go forward, for the next two years, those licensing fees are going to continue to increase regardless of whether or not we make the upgrade. Because as that money from two thousand and two, the Help America Vote Act expires, we're going to be required to pay the money anyway. So at this time, our Board's thought is to go ahead with the upgrade since we're going, it, it makes sense to do it now. We're going to have to pay for the money either now or later anyway. So we would like to move forward with that upgrade to our software. The only other major thing that we have for, for next year to keep in mind is, in terms of the redistricting, the amount of mail that our office will have to send out. When we do these redistrictings and we move polling locations or we move precinct boundaries, we are required to send mailings to those individuals. And we may have various other redistrictings happening, whether it be a city or a village changing their lines. We may have multiple times we have to send out mailings, and that is going to be an increased cost that we haven't had since ten years ago when we've had redistricting, redistricting in the past. That.
What about the bilingual ballots?
That's one of our unknown costs right now. We did have the Department of Justice come in and discuss with us their observation that they did at this last election, but they have not gotten back to us yet. They intend to do that in the next couple of weeks to let us know what that's going to, what they're going to require. If we do have to go to bilingual ballots, that would be a substantial cost.
And would that be for two thousand and eleven?
Yes, yes, they, they would look to do it in two thousand and eleven. We have told them that our concern is, we need enough time. In Cuyahoga, they came in just before an election and said, well, here, this is what you need to do. Well, in terms of planning for that election, we didn't have time to do that. But if they do require us to either provide bilingual ballots, or even if they only require us to have additional translators or have our audio ballot be in Spanish, it would be an additional cost, because we currently have nobody on staff that has any kind of degree in the Spanish language. I mean, we would, the Board would certainly want somebody that has formal education in Spanish to be proofing ballots and to be.
Translating.
Yes.
You had given us two lists. You gave us a list of newly mandated costs for two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and then you also gave us a cost-saving measures for two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. Bless you. So for two thousand and ten, you're showing that you're decreasing your costs by a little over forty-nine thousand dollars. But then for two thousand and eleven, it was going to be an increase of about forty-four thousand dollars.
Yes.
You're going to need additional forty-four thousand, more than what you have this year.
That is correct, because of those additional costs, and a lot of that, as I mentioned, comes from the redistricting that we're going to have next year.
And then, is there any way to project that into two thousand and twelve? Is that going to be a one-time redistricting cost? Or is that going to be another, are you going to be breaking even then for two thousand and twelve? Do you have any idea for two thousand and twelve?
The problem that we run into there, and I, I will have a conversation with our municipalities. The problem we run into with redistricting is you have congressional and House and State Senate redistricting that the state controls. Local redistricting is controlled by each municipality. In the two thousand, after the two thousand census, we had some cities that immediately got us their information right after the census. We had those in about two thousand and one. Other ones, like Amherst, waited all the way until, I believe, two thousand and three. So if they're able to get us that information sooner, then there wouldn't be residual costs into two thousand and twelve. If you have, for political reasons or local reasons or whatever, local communities holding off on redrawing their wardlines, because technically, those new wardlines wouldn't go in effect until two thousand and thirteen, just as the last ones went effect in two thousand and three, most of them. If they are able to get this, get those to us in a timely fashion, then there wouldn't be that residual cost into two thousand and twelve. If they're not able to do that, which we don't have any control over, then there would be.
As I stated earlier, two thousand and twelve is the key year that I have the most concern. And I unfortunately can't just look at next year and be, you know, I have to look into twelve also, so.
I do have one question about the GIS system.
Yes.
You know, the auditor has a GIS.
Oh.
And he, he at one time had an employee on a cooperative basis with the Public Services Institute at Lorraine County Community College. Why don't you talk to him?
That is a very good point, and actually, we have. This is the, and we've used them to the extent we can. And actually, I will say this, Mark Stewart has been very accommodating to our office in assisting us with mapping and any kind of GIS things that we need. However, the problem that we run into is that they do have GIS mapping, and we can say, these are where our precinct boundaries are, and they can do that. In terms of redistricting, the problem, the labor costs, is where we actually have to go in and move voters in our voter registration system. And connecting a GIS system to our voter registration system is where the cost comes. But like I said, they, they have been very, very helpful providing us with accurate maps and, and working with us very, very well, even though I know they've had many budget cuts as well.
Good. It's just, I wasn't sure that that was information that you were privy to, and so I was just sharing.
And I have a question. I guess the CCAO had talked about the Board of Elections becoming a state office. Any news of that?
You know, I, I actually haven't heard anything about that. I do know from, as many of you know, I used to work in the Secretary of State's office. I do know that the new secretary was in the Secretary of State's office yesterday and had asked for employment figures of all Boards of Elections. So that may be something that the new secretary wants and may be something that they will push through, but I haven't heard anything specifically about that.
So if that would happen, would that mean that we wouldn't personally, countywide, be funding the Board of Elections to state?
I, I wouldn't count on the state leaving any fiscal burden anytime soon.
They might take the plum and give us a bill for it. Okay, thanks, Paul. Veterans Commission, Sam Batunus?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sure you all were given a copy of the budget that was presented. That budget was drawn and put together under the direction of those responsibilities imposed upon the Veteran Service Commission by Chapter fifty-nine oh one of the Highway Revised Code. At the bottom line on that budget reflects slightly less than one-third of what potentially should or would be available to the Veteran Service Commission under fifty-nine oh one. There were several questions that you asked us to respond to. We do work an eight-hour day. Our office is open from eight to four-thirty. Each employee takes a half hour for lunch. They do not all take lunch at the same time. The office is open continuously from eight to four-thirty. What cost-saving measures have you put in place? The Commissioners, when they go to training, do not stay overnight. We all drive in one vehicle. The, all overnight travel has to be approved by the Commissioners prior to travel taking place.
You Commissioners, not these Commissioners.
Pardon?
You, you, your Commissioners, not the county Commissioners.
Veterans Commissioners.
Then the county Commissioners can do what they choose to do, as long as Jim Cordez lets them do it.
Whoa, that is an inaccurate statement.
Yes, you will.
I probably will, but then at my age, who cares?
But you enjoyed making it, didn't you?
I could say that better, because I knew you the first time you ran.
You sure did.
Yes, I did. Unfortunately, I didn't support you, but then I think.
You did, I'd forgotten.
You ran against John Bender.
Well, he made a better state representative.
Okay, I'll, I'll defer to your judgment on that. The budget does, does not contain any pay increases for employees. However, there is an increase in the payroll, and that is due to the hiring of two employees. Those employees were hired to provide transportation to veterans in this county. As we've had this discussion before, assistance takes many forms. There's financial assistance, there's physical assistance, and there's, you know, transportation, all kinds of assistance. That demand for transportation has increased greatly in the past several years. We currently now operate, runs to Brexville, Wade Park, and to the clinic in Lorraine. The clinic in Lorraine is a local county pickup and delivery, and we return them to their homes. There is an additional increase, I'm sure you, somebody would like to ask that question, in contract services. That basically was a contract signed with Life Care. We do not have the capability or the trained people to transport veterans who are immobile. We contract that to Life Care. We are also currently transporting, I believe, four veterans to six o'clock appointments. These appointments are scheduled by the VA. The appointment is paid for by the VA, but they do not provide transportation.
Can I stop you just for one second?
Sure.
Because I have three different things here. Which, what's the total budget? Is it the one million thirty-four thousand or the one million seventy-four thousand?
One million thirty-four.
One million thirty-four.
The, the other one was a previous one that we had a discussion about, and we made some adjustments in.
Um, not, are you considering nine employees? Um, I have, this page three, nine employees or without?
We have three drivers. We have one, two, three, four. Eight, I believe. Oh, nine with the director, yes. Almost forgot, yeah. Yeah, nine employees.
Okay.
And we, and we will stay at that level in the foreseeable future. Another cost-cutting thing that we're doing is we are cross-training all of our Veterans Service Officers to also be financial investigators, so that when a case comes in, whoever is not busy at that particular time can respond to the needs of the veterans that come in. They may not be able to take their case, but they will take all the input information and give it to whoever is necessary to follow up on the case.
Okay, Sam, I meant to call you prior to this meeting. It's just been so crazy.
Oh, I understand.
Your salary amount last year was, or for this, for this year, two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-four. You're asking for an additional sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars to cover.
Excuse me, Commissioner, correction. That's only through October thirty-first.
What?
The salary line item is.
This?
Ten thirty-one. Okay, so there's two months missing from that, not to stop you, but.
Okay. There's a total then. Twenty-five times twelve? About three-hundred-and-four thousand, then?
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right, so I don't, I'm not understanding, that's, it makes it even worse, actually, if it's three-hundred-and-four thousand.
What it looks like, Sam, just let me jump in, Commissioner, is you've got the two new employees on staff, so your line item was two-hundred-and-seven thousand for employees. It's now about three-hundred thousand you're going to expend this year, so you did transfers to cover that shortfall, correct?
Last year, we did ask you for some transfers, which you approved. That covered the shortfall, because those employees were hired, I believe, right around the first of the year.
Well, they, they didn't get full year's payroll, though, because that makes up your seventeen or eighteen thousand difference.
That is correct.
Versus your appropriation ask for next year.
But the, the appropriation ask for next year is asking for a hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars more than this year. Yeah, because they're taking this off, the Memorial Day reimbursement. Memorial Day reimbursement was about fourteen thousand dollars, thirteen-nine, so you have to add that on to the ten thirty-four. And last year's budget was eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
It looks like the increase is about a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars versus two thousand and ten budget. I think that's what Commissioner Colsey's getting.
That's for two employees, and.
Two employees, a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand? I know, when we, we, when we spoke back when all this got heated.
Hundred and three thousand dollars.
Hundred and three?
I believe.
I, I have an additional one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, three-twenty-eight, because, because of the Memorial Day reimbursement that normally came out of your budget that you want to push over into the Commissioners.
Basically, we're not authorized to do that. That's why.
But that was in your budget, that used to be part of your budget, and now you're asking for that not to be part of your budget.
Yeah, we've taken that out. We're not requesting funds for that.
But we, so we're paying for it. It's still part of something that needs to be paid, it's just not a line item in your budget anymore.
It's not a Veteran Service Commission debt or funding. There is a Attorney General's decision saying that we should not be paying that, nor by purchasing grave markers.
And like I, we had spoke before, and I, and my only concern is where everybody else is being sliced and diced and cut and. And like I, we had spoke before, and I, and I, my only concern is where everybody else is being sliced and diced and cut and laying people off. It's hard to increase somebody's budget, even though I love the veterans to death. They're my favorite thing, next to sliced bread, but, um, I, I just, I don't know what to do with this.
I, I understand your concerns. I, I would like to point out to you that, uh, we spent out of the county budget in two thousand and nine, eight-hundred-and-forty thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Right.
Out of that expenditure, out of county funds, we brought back into the county from the VA seventy-two million, one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars.
I, I don't dispute. I'm just saying for year after year after year, it's been.
Eighty-five dollars coming back into the county.
Right.
I, I understand your concerns, but basically, this money does not come out of, you know, money that you have to raise. It's a levy that you have.
No, no, it is. And what happens is if I give you another, a, a hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars more next year, I have to take it out of the sheriff, or I have to take it out of somebody else's budget to, so I'm going to s, cut somebody else a lot deeper.
Comes out of the inside millage.
It comes out of the general fund.
But it's the ins, what's considered the inside millage.
I understand that, which is general fund money. So if I don't, if I give you what you ask for, I have to cut somebody else to give that to you.
Actually, you, you either approve the budget or disapprove it based upon an illegal budget. And this is not an illegal budget.
No, I'm not saying it's an illegal budget.
Then you, you basically have the right to review it.
Question, Sam. I thought, I heard you say that the, uh, budget that was being submitted was one million thirty-four thousand dollars.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars.
It is. What are you looking at then?
I don't even know anymore. I'm looking at a total of one million, uh, seventy-four thousand.
That's the old one. This is the revised one.
That's the one that had raises and stuff in it.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to ver, I wrote down what.
They have a copy of the revision.
I wrote down what you said, but what I had in front of me didn't jive, and I just wanted to verify. Okay.
No, it's one million thirty-four thou, thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars.
Not to argue, Sam, and when I said we review or reject based on legalities, but we did through discussions. There was no levy that was able to be put on by the county many, many years ago when this was established.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Kokoski's argument that it is general fund dollars, correct, Mr. Anis? If you can explain that, all that paperwork we went through, explain where there wasn't actually. It was levy, this.
It's inside millage.
Right, there, there, there is not a separate levy out there that is dedicated for the veterans.
I understand that.
Right. Well, for the public's sense though, Commissioner, I'm just trying to clarify for the public's.
You do have a levy that's called internal millage. Do they not?
Yeah, we, we have internal. But I, I think Commissioner Kokoski's only point is, is that to give more to the veterans, it has to come from somebody else.
I understand that.
Okay. And I think that was her only point.
That's only my only point.
You do understand that we have an aging veteran population in this county, aging very rapidly, and as they age, their needs are growing dramatically. And to meet those needs, it does require funding.
Absolutely. I don't dispute that in the least.
Is in transportation. There is, uh, increases in the training, and as I've explained, that training is now being mandated by an agency that we have no control over. They tell us we have to send people to be trained. We have to send them to be trained.
Other questions for Sam? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh.
Thanks, Sam.
OSU Extension, Lynette Gord.
Uh-oh, here comes four H.
Yes.
You got lots of letters. Guys filled up my inbox on my email yesterday and today.
That's great. We like to see that.
They have a lot of supporters out there.
Well, I don't because I didn't get a chance to read them all. I started up.
They were all different, too. It wasn't like one letter by a whole bunch of different people. They were all heartfelt, I mean, from the heart, letters from various people in the community, so.
Well, good. We like that. Um, I would also like to recognize two of, um, my colleagues that are here today, because we do work as a team. And, um, Tim Malinick, who's our Horticulture Educator, is also here, and Minnie Taylor, our four-H educator.
Hi, Tim. Hi, Minnie.
I guess just to share, one of the things I gave you was the highlights of this year and what we've done in two thousand and ten. You can read those over at your leisure, but, um, just to point out that when we talk about four H, we have almost two thousand four H members in the county, and three-hundred-and-twenty-seven volunteers, adult volunteers this, um, this year, and so that's one of the things we do. The other program highlights in, uh, Family Consumer Sciences, we do a lot of food safety education, and so we educate restaurant managers throughout the county for safe food handling, and we also do pesticides, pesticide applicator training for, um, those workers throughout the county that, um, handle chemicals through the Horticulture Department. We also do a lot of individual consultation with, um, home horticulture, and so those are just some highlights that I want to share. The other thing, as we're talking about cost-saving measures, over the past four or five years, we've, um, reduced our force from sixteen employees to currently we have seven-point-six employees, and so that's full-time and part-time people that work in our office. And if you look at the, um, kind of the expenditure, expenditures for two thousand and ten, on that document at the bottom of there, we, I kind of highlighted some of the funds that we have brought in or worked to bring in this year, um, these grant funds from, um, from work that our employees are doing, and so, um, our especially program educators put themselves out on grants to conduct programming, and so therefore we can, um, get money back from those grants to pay for some of the things, you know, support some of the things in our office. Some other savings that we've done, um, our newsletters are online on the web. We don't have as much postage. We're doing a lot of email with that. We try to charge back postage whenever we can to grants and to other committees that use that. The other thing with employees, we, we do not pay overtime, and so that's just not something we do. Uh, we have a couple employees this year that have taken, uh, leave without pay in order to cut costs, and so they just take time off without pay for those days. So we've appreciated that. I guess I would entertain questions that you have about the budget.
Okay, I'm looking at a, a total county two thousand and eleven budget request. It says two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and on the other side, it says actual county appropriations two thousand and ten was one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct, and just to clarify that, to date, we've received eighty-six thousand, four hundred. We have not received the seventeen thousand, four hundred that was allocated from solid waste.
That was my next question. The solid waste appropriation hasn't been.
We have not received those monies.
But you're asking for a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand more in general fund money?
Well, that's the, you know, that's the budget request that we have, and we understand that, um, the hundred-and-three-eight, like we talked about last year, is that bottom-line amount of what we need to have four H and OSU Extension in Lorain County.
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's where we worked really hard last year to reinstate the four H program. It's a wonderful program.
Exactly. Um, the other issue with that i, is rent, and I guess my understanding last year when I left is that that would be a provided part of our budget. And so when I worked with the budget this year and trying to stay within that, you know, that was something that I didn't anticipate that we would have to pay. And so when I received a bill in October, I was very surprised, um, and that's a thirty-five thousand dollar, um, bill for that rent.
Really be a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand.
Right.
To include the rent.
To include the rent.
And don't you have some private monies coming in to help subsidize your four H program?
We don't really, we have a development fund that, that we have been working to establish, and we've raised. If you look at the, the other funds used in two thousand and ten, we've raised about sixty thousand dollars of that money.
Sixty?
Sixty. It's actually on there, sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight that was used this year in order to pay expenses.
So it is a public-private partnership type of.
Yes, it is.
Situation.
And we've also raised program fees this year, and that's what's included, um, in that sixty thousand, and so it's, it's part program fees for doing programming. Um, we charge for insect identification. We charge for some of the classes that we provide, um, that we didn't charge in the past.
Well, I, I think you could tell just by the conversations we have so far that it's going to be a difficult year this year and even worse the following. So even at the hundred and three, it's going to be hard pressed to.
I think, Commissioner, we almost have to commit that hundred and three hundred and four, because eighty-six is out of our general fund.
The two eighty-six is not even a possibility.
Right. It's always good to ask.
That's my job.
Like the sheriff, asking for additional debt.
But a hundred and four thousand dollars actually guarantees we keep an extension and a four H, correct?
Right, exactly.
What do we lose? If you need two eighty-six and we appropriate a hundred and four and just freeze, what happens to the rest of the programs?
If we cannot come up, if we cannot come up with the rest of those funds, then we lose other program assistance and other support services for our county, and so we may u, le, um, lose secretarial staff. You know, we may have to go to four-day work weeks, those kinds of things, you know, if we can't come up with that extra money. And that's what we've been working really hard this year and applying for grants and trying to bring in some extra funds. You see, at the bottom of there, we had a, what we call our rainy day fund, which, you know, being fiscally responsible, I try to keep, you know, enough money to pay severance, enough money to pay, you know, a three-month operating expense, and we've had to use a lot of that fund this year.
How much is left in that fund?
In the Commissioner's fund right now, as of yesterday, there's three hundred dollars.
No, I mean in your, your reserve.
In our reserve fund, we have about seventy thousand.
All right, just making sure the numbers were correct going across.
Seventy?
Seven.
Seventy.
Okay, uh, Alisa, uh, will you check on this, uh, solid waste district, uh, you shouldn't because that.
Well, that was, discussion came up yesterday, actually at our policy committee. May I have to report that? We did policy committee yesterday and sent the report down to the EPA with unanimous vote, by the way, uh, but one of the issues were that Keith Bay was going to be meeting with OSU Extension and revising or fine-tuning the work that was done based on those dollars.
Right, and, and I guess I'm a little confused as to, you know, is that we are putting a document together for Keith for two thousand and eleven, but does that affect our two thousand and ten monies?
I would not think so. This late in the year, it should still be encumbered in the solid waste budget.
Yeah, that was actually sent in, I believe, the end of August, and I can get a copy of that if you need it.
Well, we just had a changeover then also. You're aware of Dan Bilman retired and Keith was our new director, so it might have been.
So you'll facilitate that, right, Lisa? Okay, all right. Any other questions for?
I guess the other question is the rent for this year. Is that, is there any way to negotiate any of that monies?
Well, that's very interesting.
I don't remember. Did we say that they didn't have to pay rent last year?
I, I sent a letter last month, um, requesting the funds, and it was, and I did say in the letter, I was never under the impression that the reduction in or allocation, that rent was going to be forgiven. That's why I sent a bill.
Do you want to comment? Because Hale's going to.
Change his tape again?
He's changing his tape again?
No, he's going to yell because Lisa's talking over there.
The, the, uh, we'll have some discussion. I suggest that I get back to her on that issue. I don't think that it's something we need to be on point with right now, so.
I think that sounds like a good suggestion, so, uh, Jim will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on down the list. Next is Nancy Fani from Soil and Water.
Good morning, Nancy.
Morning.
Thank you for having me.
Just breaking news.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for funding us for two thousand and ten. We were very grateful that you provided us the opportunity. Uh, we were lucky enough for two thousand and nine to have a carryover, which, uh, helped us get through, uh, this year. However, uh, we're down to three employees. Uh, we have sold vehicles. We're down to one vehicle. We've sold our equipment. So we have taken as much depletion from costs as we can to survive on, on the seventy-five thousand that was given to us. Um, just to have three employees employed in the office, it's roughly a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. I included the increase on this with the new medical insurance. At the time when I had submitted my budget back in May, I wasn't aware that the insurance cost was going to go up, so there will be a slight difference in that. We were lucky enough to get a state appropriation, and, uh, to our surprise, we found out in July it was at ninety-seven percent. When we had originally talked, it was anywhere between forty-five and fifty-five percent, so we were tickled to get that extra money. That is broken down into monthly payments, sent to the Commissioners of roughly six thousand, sixty-eight dollars a month. Sometimes that cost does vary because it comes from the tipping fees from the state of Ohio, so we don't know what that money is until you receive it as well. But it will fluctuate out to, uh, seventy-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars over a twelve-month period. It'll be from August of this year and will end in June of two thousand and eleven. I have, uh, checked into other funding as far as grants to see what we could do to help implement more costs within the office. Unfortunately, the grants that we have checked into are just for on-ground. There would be no administrative fees. Some of them, uh, would have a fee that would bounce back into our office anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars, but with the short staff, there was no way we could begin to implement a five-hundred to a larger thousand-dollar grant to move forward and do it right with just the short staff, and then only have an income come back of anywhere from five-hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. The other projects that we do are the best management practices, uh, grass water waste filler strips. Uh, we implement wetlands, animal waste systems, uh, composting facilities, fertilizer and chemical storage facilities. Also, you know that we implement on behalf of the County Commissioners the Phase Two, um, that has been moving fairly slow because of the develop, not, not large development within the county. Um, out of the six control measures for that is set by Ohio EPA, we do administrate on your behalf the erosion control rules, the post-construction, the plan rules, and Lorain County Pipe. We also continue to work with the townships as well to make sure that the county and the township still comply with Ohio EPA. I am asking that you can, uh, fund us again for next year to continue those services within the townships and within the county, and to make sure that you're complying with the rules and regulations of EPA as well.
And did you establish the amount necessary?
I'm sorry?
Did you establish the amount necessary?
For funding?
Yes.
For our three employees, it's a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand plus. That doesn't include supplies.
And, and you need that from us in addition to, or your budget, you're asking us to seventy-five thousand from us?
Well, that's what you gave us last year. We would like to have the seventy-five thousand, but jeez, if you want to give us a few more, that'll be fine, too.
Never hurts to ask.
It does not. I found out.
Asking yourself.
If we do not receive the seventy-five thousand, it's almost evident that our office will probably close. At, at what date and time within the year it would close, I can't answer that question.
I didn't hear the beginning.
If we're not funded for two thousand and ten, there is a very high chance that our office will close. I do not have a date of when that would happen, but it will.
Well, then we'd have to find a way still to fund someone to do the MPDES and such like that and file the report, so.
I would hope so, yes.
Other questions for Nancy?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Looby? Common Police Court, the court administrator?
Save the best for last.
That would be, uh, a nice characterization, thank you.
Well, you're not Eddie Zaleski or Mark Betlaski, but you'll do.
No, they are doing the, uh, the business which the voters of Lorraine County have elected them. They have sent me over there as their designee, and hopefully you will find my presentation to be acceptable. Uh, commissioners, good afternoon.
Is it afternoon already?
I think we are moving into...
It's still morning. It's, it's, it's still morning. We have time.
Well, then I will quickly end so that I do not take up your afternoon.
Thank you.
Um, in the, uh, the request, uh, as a scheduling process that you sent over to us, you asked us to address a couple of questions, and hopefully I will satisfy your answers, uh, provide you satisfactory answers to those, and, uh, a lot of other information with respect to the courts. One of the questions you asked, uh, was what during these economic times we of the court have done to, um, secure savings? And I got a number of things I'd like to address to your attention. Uh, with respect to supplies, materials, and equipment, um, one of the things that the court did, uh, almost two years ago is we implemented a centralized purchasing system. Um, I'm proud to report that that has, uh, brought to bear a significant number of savings as far as, uh, reduction in duplication, cost, weigh, storage, as well as increased accountability and security. Uh, the court has engaged in a program of reduction with respect to pa- postage, paper, uh, envelopes, expenses, generally our consumables. Um, one of the ways we've done this is by utilizing a postcard system, and, uh, we're, we're very proud of that success. We've been extremely aggressive. Unfortunately, our vendors haven't appreciated this, but with our negotiations with them, uh, we've cut a significant number of costs with respect to our copiers, our legal publications, our membership dues, um, and some of those negotiations we've, uh, we've shared with other county departments, and they have in kind been able to take advantage of some of the savings we've, uh, reaped. We've implemented a rolling program of purchasing versus leasing equipment. We've also, uh, engaged in a program where we have eliminated all of the, uh, staff's personal, uh, printers. At, at one point in time, it was believed that that was an efficiency, uh, but one of the things we've done is, uh, has eliminated all those inkjet printers and gone to more centralized printing hubs, and, again, resulted in savings to the general fund. Uh, with respect to personnel, in the last ten years, no new general fund employee has been, uh, acquired without direct approval from the county commissioners. Conversely, in the last ten years, we, the court has brought, brought into its fold, uh, eight new court employees. None of those have been dependent on general funds. As a result of budget cuts in the last two years, we've had staff reductions and hourly reductions in our, in the court, um, within the court. Because of these, uh, reductions, the judicial staff have, have been tasked with handling additional responsibilities. They've had to go over and assume the roles and responsibilities that were previously handled in the probation department.
How many people were reduced?
Uh, we eliminated two probation officers, as well as, uh, reduced the hours of our jury commissioners. Despite this decrease in the court funding, the court has continued to, over the last two years, see an increase in caseloads. Uh, this has necessitated us to be very creative, and we, instead of, again, hiring new personnel, what we did was, um, converted our staff attorney positions to magistrates, and those magistrates for now are handling some judicial functions that, uh, previously we were not able to handle, again, without any additional funding, uh, impact to the general fund. Uh, we've developed a qualification program for our court, court interpreters. That was another line item that we in the court were displeased with as far as how we were expending our funds, and by, uh, tightening that up, we've generated some savings to the general fund. Um, we've eliminated the use of outside court reporters, we've gone to a pool system. Uh, just earlier this year, the court created our, uh, first website. Again, something we're very proud of, something we thought was, uh, uh, took a little too long to come to fruition, but we did that through existing county resources. We didn't hire an outside consultant, um, so again, something we're proud of. We are the only, um, judicial, um, department that does not have a separate IT staff. We've, uh, over the years, continued to use the commissioner's IT staff, we're very pleased with that. But again, it's a cost savings that we've been able to return to the general fund by not having those additional personnel. I'm sure Mr. Cordez remembers the, uh, difficult discussions about the jury bus. Uh, that was something that did actually finally come to, uh, a resolution, uh, with the result of a reduction in costs to the general fund. In two thousand and eight, the court...
Can you, can you expand on that? Do we have a jury bus?
We do not.
No.
Somebody just told me that we did have a jury bus.
Well, we, we have a bus, but our range... It has, it has two flat tires and no fuel. The, we made arrangements for, uh, parking at various spots in the county, and then the, the coordination of the, using those spots is done by the courts.
Correct.
Thereby saving us, um, uh, maintenance workers, uh, driving the bus and/or calling in additional staff, which we had been doing for a while, um, with, with the need for a CDL driver. It was, it was, it was an extensive savings.
Very creative.
And the, and, and, um, uh, Tim is, I'm not sure who on your staff is, is juggling those things.
Our jury commissioners.
Is it the jury commissioners doing it?
Yeah.
But it seems to be working. Uh, it was a bifurcated process. We still have some people that are a little bit distant away, but we're, we're meeting the needs of those folks that, that need a, uh, different resource, uh, given certain limitations, so...
KDA, handicapped, elderly, we're taking care of those, correct?
Absolutely.
Request for them, you get, that you're coming to jury, there is a form on there that states, we worked on it earlier in the year, and Karen Davis was able to get the parking area behind us taken care of, so...
Yeah.
And did we take care of the one on the south side?
Yes.
Surge Street also, so, I mean, it worked out.
Right, so it's, it's, it seems to be working and saving us, you know, we were, we were anticipating thirty to fifty thousand to run jury.
Or if not more, I thought we saw eighty thousand dollars, yeah.
So, so it's, uh, it's definitely been an, an improvement. It's not, it's not a complete correction of what we need, but it, but it did take care of the, the immediate needs, and hopefully sometime in the future, we'll be able to properly address the still remaining need of the folks that are still on Washington Avenue, because it's quite a walk in the wintertime from down on Washington Avenue.
Thank you for the, uh, reflection.
Yeah, you know, in, in budget, in tight budgetary times, um, you know, from, from my perspective, they, uh, present both a challenge and an opportunity, and that was simply an opportunity that, when we became creative, um, we were able to achieve.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building. Two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Based on general funding, because that's a split department.
And in two thousand and six, another judgeship was added, Judge Morales.
Correct, correct. Um, you know, just on that point, um, I, I mentioned briefly that the court's caseload is, is up, and it tremendously is. The dockets that we have today are, are based on a, a judge, a case per judge docket, um, are equivalent to what we use to justify Judge Morales's position, okay? So we have not come back, because of those increased caseloads, we've not come back to the general fund, and justifiably suggested to you that we have another judge. What we've done, without any impact to the general fund, was, um, create these magistrate positions, and again, fund those out of non-general fund dollars.
And Judge Walther from Progate is also taking over a few cases, correct?
That's correct. Those, a number of those cases used to be handled. Those are the criminal non-support cases. Those were handled by the Domestic Relations Family Court, and now those will be handled by Judge Walther. I wanna really, I wanna, this is something that I think is very compelling. Not to minimize what I've already addressed with you, but what I'm gonna talk about next are real dollars. In two thousand and eight, um, the court, uh, because through our special projects fund, gave to the clerk in the sheriff's office a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. In two thousand and nine, uh, we gave to the clerk a hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. This year, in two thousand and ten, we will give to the clerk two hundred thousand dollars.
Is that the increased fee for, uh, foreclosures?
Correct. It is out of those fees that we were paying the, uh, making a distribution to the clerk. As I said, that was two hundred thousand dollars to the clerk. In addition, in two thousand and ten, we will give, because of our, through our special projects funds, we will, uh, make a savings to the general fund of one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and I wanna break that down to you. Um, as I told you briefly, uh, the court created a magistrate position. That cost to the court was five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Those are funds that the, that the general fund did not bear. Uh, we've also created a foreclosure department, desperately needed in this county. We're very proud of that. It's, it's, uh, allowed us to focus and give, uh, to members of the public the attention that this crisis deserves. That cost the court two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we've had a mediation department for a number of years. That, that department costs the court ninety thousand dollars. So all told, that's a nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollar savings to the general fund, in addition to the two hundred thousand dollars that we've given to the clerk this year, representing a total savings to the general fund of one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Those are real dollars. The, uh, another thing that we're very proud of, you heard, uh, the sheriff talk about, is Sue Smink. Uh, Sue was acquired through a grant fund through our probation department. Again, no general fund dollars required. Sue has, uh, because of what she's been able to bring, resulted in significant savings to the jail fund. Um, and the court is very, uh, pleased with our cooperative effort with Sue, both with, from the common police court and the municipal courts as well. Uh, we've engaged in, I know I've had some, some discussions with Commissioner Kahlo about this, and perhaps, uh, Commissioner Kokoski, about the, uh, expenses that are related to the indigent, uh, defense funds. Um, the court has been very proactive in engaging in some dialogue with the public defender's office to come in and do a study and a survey to determine whether or not it would be, uh, we could achieve some cost savings by having a public defender's office. We're still waiting for those survey results, but again, we're being very proactive in that respect.
And we also talked, Tim, about having someone who could audit these people, whether they're truly indigent or not, was another concern, was chasing them down.
Absolutely. That's, that's a, a frustration on our side, too, Commissioner, and I don't have an easy solution for you. Uh, I know probably about a year and a half ago, we had some discussions with, um, uh, Jim Cordez, and attempting to bring in an outside agency, and to do that, it, uh, it's not as easy as it would seem, because, you know, they wanna look at it and say, uh, individual X is, um, is, has a credit history, is capable of paying. The reality is, more often than not, those people aren't. And I, and I, you know, can I share your frustration, uh, with not being able to achieve some of the, the fees, or the, the fees that were cut by the courts, but the reality is, is some of those are just never gonna be, um, able to be recovered.
Yeah, as a, as a...
Show the sheriff's fees.
Yeah, as an, as an addition to that, when we did meet with them, and it was a while back, they, they were using credit ratings as a source...
Justification.
Right, as a source of what they would say were potentially, uh, good candidates for collection. Not all people that, that, uh, have an ability to pay at, at credit ratings. Uh, some are very responsible folks, they just don't have the ability to pay. So the targeted, um, uh, audience was gonna be difficult to tease out of the data. And at the end of the day, I actually thought we were really gonna end up paying a little money and not receiving a whole lot back. I think you came to the same conclusion. At best, we were gonna be at neutral, uh, the company was gonna make some money, we were gonna have disgruntled residents, and we weren't really gonna achieve any success in increasing our bottom line. Uh, the, the one thing that we may wanna do, though, is, you know, revisit that sometime in the future, and make sure our same assumptions from a few years ago, uh, are still, um, practical today. So maybe Tim and I will get together next year and just review the data, the data, and freshen the thinking on that.
Sure. Let's see, so we, we've, uh, we are still waiting for the results from that public defender's study, and we'll share that with the commissioners. The court, you know, ultimately, um, it would be very supportive of any mechanism that would allow us to ensure that individuals are, uh, appropriately represented by legal counsel at a reasonable cost to the, uh, taxpayers. And so if we can do that through a public defender's office, more, uh, tightened controls with respect to distribution of those funds to attorneys, whatever way we can do it, we're, uh, we're on board with that and continue to be proactive.
Tim, would you, uh, note, uh, where we stand out of the eighty-eight counties on reimbursement to attorneys?
We are probably the lowest. Um, we are at, our reimbursement rates are based on, um, figures established in the eighties, I believe, maybe in the early nineties. Um, we are much below the standards recommended by the public defender's office. Um, I know our, the council that, the attorneys that represent individuals are, uh, grouse significantly about that, but, you know, as we explain to them now, it's, it's a very difficult time to come forward to the commissioners and ask for a increase in the fees, so...
That, and, and I, I, I will also add to the list of my concerns when the state begins their difficult process of establishing, um, their budget for their, um, new tax year. We need to take a serious look at whether they're gonna continue to fund the indigent attorney defense fund. At all. Everything's on the chopping block with regard to monies coming into the county. I, I'm not sure of the exact figure, but I believe we receive about six or seven hundred thousand?
Thirty-five percent is what the supposed number...
Lisa, six or seven?
It does, every year it goes down.
It's supposed to be fifty, right?
Well, it was always twenty-three percent ones, so I'm, I'm pretty happy at thirty-five, I would prefer to fifty.
But it's supposed to be fifty, right?
Up to.
That was the intent. That was the intent.
All right, just done.
Well, we sent them a bill, they didn't recognize our bill and didn't respond to it. Uh, the, but I think we received about six or seven hundred thousand this year, Lisa. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, so that seven hundred thousand could potentially be in play again next year with the state, remembering that they, they have routinely lowered that reimbursement to us when times were difficult down at the state level. That disappearing completely is on the table, along with the cat tax and the local government fund. So you can see, we have millions of dollars that are on the table that could potentially evaporate, depending on what the state does. I would say there's about seven or eight million dollars that the state just wiped out, all assistance to the local government that could be, that could be eliminated, that we would have to deal with. Is it gonna be that drastic? I, I doubt it, but you can, you can definitely, uh, rest assured that they're gonna be cutting some of those things.
And, and as a side on that note, I would also point out that both the attorney fees and the, uh, professional services accounts are one of the, the largest line items on the court's budget, and it, it's ultimately not a function of anything that the court can do with expect, with respect to those expenditures.
The, the, uh, let's, for a moment, let's talk about the, that professional services. We've had a lot of capital cases this year, and a couple that are still on the, the docket for coming...
You have a very competent individual next door to you that could perhaps, uh, uh, opine on those cases. No, I wouldn't do that to Jerry, that's not fair.
Well...
Well, woke him up, anyway.
I mean, I would, I would suggest to you that those are a function of decisions in the prosecutor's office, with all due respect to them, and, um, they are very expensive. Um, those cases cost the court, since, uh, more often than not, over a, a hundred thousand dollars each.
And, and we're, we're, we're obligated to pay those costs.
Correct.
So with the increase in capital cases that we're seeing, we've seen an acceleration in the cost, and an inability to, to limit those because we're required to pay...
Absolutely.
Uh, for those defenses which are much more costly. Uh, again, we're just, I just wanna point out, because sometimes people don't get to hear, uh, you know, why those things are, and, and, and you and I, about three or four times a year, have discussions over the need for money in that account. Uh, so, you know, we've been able to deal with it, but it's been increasing, and it's not, I'm gonna really, I can't believe I'm saying this, it's not the fault of the court. Uh, we, we're, we're mandated to pay, and so the more, every time you hear about a capital case that's, that's coming into the court, you can, you can just know that the cash register is ringing. It's, and I think there's lots of them coming down the road that, that are on the agenda for, on the docket for next year. So, uh, we need to be prepared to deal with that eventuality, because we've been funding that on a limited basis as, as it's, as it's needed. We don't really upfront fund that account. So we've, we've developed the, uh, funding stream as, as, uh, Tim has recommended throughout the course of the year, and, and I think this year, we really need to take a strong look at the trend, so we can adequately budget, uh, for the year, rather than ad-hoc-ing it through the year.
I would encourage that.
Oh, that'd be nice. Uh, go on, Tim.
Um, thank you. Um, in, um, let's see, like, on that same issue, last year, we, uh, supplemented, even though the commissioners have indicated that that is a responsibility that they understand and recognizes theirs, last year at the end of the year, times were tight, um, the court, uh, was able to transfer two hundred and five thousand dollars into that account to, uh, pay the bills at the end of the year. So again, we, we do our part when we can. Um, in two thousand and eight, we returned seventy-two thousand dollars to the general fund. In two thousand and nine, we returned in excess of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. It is our severe... It is our severe, our sincere hope this year to return over $150,000. So I'm here today to say that we do everything that we can. We are fiscally sound, we are prudent, and we are conservative. And when available, we do return money to the general fund. I already pointed out that one of the largest budget items, two budget items on ours are the professional services and the attorney fees. Line items which the court, as much as we diligently pursue reducing those, very little we can do. That's the good stuff. Let me get to the bad. You know, everybody's aware of the deferment of payment of expenses, capital expenses, because of the economic times, and we in the court have been no different. And there's two that I would be remiss if I didn't address with you today that I think is going to come to bear in 2011. The first is the, it has to do with the crime lab. The crime lab is perhaps a victim of its own success. It's been around for a number of years, was funded out of the, it was characterized as a crime lab levy, drug levy. So a portion of that levy goes to fund the crime lab. And in the last number of years, the crime lab's production has increased over threefold. And we are now unfortunately in a dilemma where despite all their efforts of increased productivity, we are looking at delays in criminal cases of six to seven months for drug processes. And the question is, what does that mean? Well, right now, based on the information that I got before coming over here, we have on average of 40 to 50 inmates in the Lorraine County Jail that are sitting there pending their case proceeding to trial. It costs us $110 a day, or it costs you or the jail $110 a day for every day that those individuals are sitting in jail. If you think about that, just take the more conservative, the 40. Forty times 110 is over $4,000 a day. If we have those individuals sitting in jail for six to seven months, that is a significant cost to the county. What I would propose to you is acquiring a new piece of equipment in the lab for them to basically double their output. We looked at it a couple of different ways. You know, we said, here's our problem, which is, we're not getting enough stuff processed by the lab. How can we best solve this problem? Could we go to BCI NI, the state institution? Well, that takes longer and costs more money than we're currently experiencing. So based on our research, that's off the table. We said, well, maybe we can run the lab 24/7, bring some additional personnel in, just use the same piece of equipment, let's run that. To do another eight-hour shift is about, because of OSHA standards, we've got to have two personnel in the lab. That will cost us about $100,000 per shift. And so that's, so if we run three shifts or add two additional shifts, we're looking at $200,000 a year, every year for a cost. We ultimately concluded it would be cheaper to acquire a new piece of equipment. Our rough estimates right now are that a new piece of equipment would cost about $65,000. I don't know if any of you have been over there and seen the lab, it's a pretty tight space. That new piece of equipment will not physically sit in the lab. So we would have to do a build-out in the next adjoining facility. I, you know, we looked at this probably about a year and a half ago. We were looking at doing it in-house. This was not when we were going to move, put a new piece of equipment in there. We were just going to expand the lab. So I don't have those figures, but maybe Karen Davis through your office might have those. So we'd be looking at a new piece of equipment. Obviously, with the equipment, there's going to be additional cost associated with running that equipment. But I would say we'd be looking at probably $150,000 to $200,000 in expenditures to move forward with this project.
No new employees though, Tim?
No, no employees.
The current staff there could run the machine?
Yep, that's what they've represented to me.
Is it still though, if you're running two machines at eight-hour shifts versus running one machine at three shifts, are you going to get more production and cut our savings down based on jail state?
You know, based...
I'm putting it out there. You guys are working on, we talked about it.
Exactly. You know, we looked at it a couple of different ways, you know. I, as I've heard from you guys repeatedly, there is a desire, when available, to avoid unnecessary personnel costs. And so we're mindful.
But if we've got $120,000 a month on 40, well, $160,000 a month at $4,000 a day times 40 inmates, if we could cut that in half...
It represents a significant savings. Yeah, I mean, here's...
And I don't know if it extrapolates out, I mean, the county jail still has to operate. So I mean, I don't think it extrapolates out as the true savings when you get rid of one body.
Correct.
But is it, again, more cost-effective if we're running three shifts? How much faster would that versus two shifts?
Yeah.
Just a question. I mean, at least if we talk back and forth, I would just ask it now.
And I apologize, I wish I had, you know, this is something that's recently come to my attention, and we've had a difficult time kind of bringing to light all the figures. And I would love to have some more figures and more accuracy on what I have in front of you today. Here's what I would represent to you, is that I, it is my plan to come to you sometime in early 2011 with a more concrete, specific proposal. And if it actually bears out that we could run three shifts cheaper, then we ultimately could do that. Absolutely, that would be my recommendation to you.
Because I know we have a certain amount of time to do things in between the grand jury, the indictments, the pre-trials, and everything else of your system. So I don't know if there's a finite window that it couldn't be done any faster than it would matter because they have to go through the process.
Yeah, you know, one of the things, and the second item I'm going to address with you actually kind of touches on that, is that process itself. And part of that is a factor of what happens at the municipal court, it getting bound over to the common police court, going through the various clerks, from their clerks to our clerks. Sue Smink has done a legion job as far as trying to expedite that process and get individuals out of the jail on CSR or whatever. Again, reduce those costs. But she's literally bumping up against her ability to do so much with so little. The next item really addresses that process or that lack of productivity, which is the case management system. Commissioner, I've had some brief conversations with you. I have not talked to the other commissioners about this. But this is the second large item that I see looming on the court's budget as far as an expenditure in 2011. And I would say that it's very much akin to the lab. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to fund the lab or a new piece of equipment. I'm not telling you that's a mandate. You don't have to fund a new case management system. But there are direct ramifications economically if you do not. And those are, you know, pretty expensive. And I do understand, I've had those conversations with Jim Cordez where he says, look, at the end of the day, I can't afford to save the money because I don't have the money to spend it.
Which came first, the chicken or the egg?
I do understand that dilemma, but with respect to the case management system. For those that don't know what that is, that is, in essence, the way that the court conducts its business. That's how we log all our cases, how we track them all, how we send out all our notices, how the clerk does their job, how the clerk is able to track the fees that come in and do the billing that goes out. So it's a big component of revenue generation as well. To the extent that it's an efficient, competent system, it is, it results in savings. Our current system is outdated. Our vendor is pretty much getting out of the business that brought them to us. And we are in a dilemma that I think is going to come to a head before the 2011 is out. But let me bottom-line it for you. We haven't made any decisions. We're shopping around. We're doing our due diligence. As part of this process, you know, in my initial conversations with Commissioner Kalo, the number was pretty daunting. We were looking at about a $1 million, $1.5 million project. Again, we don't have that money either. We would be looking at trying to use some court funds, the clerk's funds, and actually co-opt with some of the other courts as well to do this. As part of our pushing on the vendor, pushing on the vendor, pushing on the vendor, we now have a proposal, that it's still in its early stages, where the vendor has proposed a county-wide system. This would be a system that would be utilized by the municipal courts and the common police court, not just our court, but the domestic relations court, the probate court, and the clerk's office. And while that may not mean anything to you, it means a huge thing to us. Every time something comes out of the muni court, they've done a whole bunch of work on it, comes over to us, it takes time, that stuff comes over in the mail. If it takes three days for that mail to get over to us, that guy's sitting in jail for three days. That's real dollars. So, again, early stages. But one of the proposals of this vendor is, instead of us buying a million and a half dollar system and perhaps somewhere down the road, Alearia buying a million and a half dollar system, they've said, you know what, here's a three or four million dollar system. You all come together and you all share in it cooperatively. If this comes to fruition, ultimately, the amount of money that we potentially would be seeking from you is a substantially small number. And so it's still early. I'm hopeful. But it's just something I need you to be aware of and to have on your radar when I come and say, here it is.
Now, that million dollars is in your budget request over 2011?
It is not. No, it's not at all. Because I, like I said, it's completely speculative at this point in time. But I would be remiss if I didn't suggest to you, this is an expenditure that I see looming. Okay. One of the, the other question that you asked is whether or not the court was willing to adjust its staff hours. I'm here to tell you that with respect to the court, hopefully, the, what I've laid out before is demonstrative of the fact that when it comes to savings in the county, everything is on the table. And that's one that is on the table. I know the judges have looked at everything from increasing hours, reducing hours, decreasing wages, furloughs, layoffs, you name it, it's all on the table. And those things stay on the table. And I'll be candid, I don't think that those things should be only on the table because we're in an economic, difficult situation. As stewards, as good stewards of the tax dollars that the citizens give us, I think we need to be looking at those at every stage. And we're doing that.
Thank you, Tim.
You're very welcome.
I just have one observation. I looked at the 2010 budget that only went to October 31st. And then the 2011 estimated. And there's a 1.7 million difference with respect to the expenditures. Just an observation.
I'm not sure I understood your question, Commissioner. Say that again. 2010...
Estimate, expended as of 10/31/10. So that's as of this year.
Okay.
Two sheets. And then the two sheets, which are the budget requested estimated expenditures for 2011, common police court.
That's what I asked, Tim, is that million dollars for software included? But you're at 3.6 million this year. Your request for 2011 is 4.6 million on the paperwork we have, a million dollar increase.
Well, I was looking at sal, just salaries alone and not the elected, just the regular employee salaries. 1.9...
4.6, 2.37.
Right. For 2011, and then for 2010, it was 1.456. So you're like $500,000 asking more for...
Absolutely. Let me explain that, and I apologize. That ultimately is a factor of our special projects funds. As I explained, and I believe this was kind of news to you last year, Commissioner, when we talked about the special projects funds. Would those represent our fees that the court charges to the people that come in to use our services? And while many people believe it's rightfully the case that those that use the court's services should be charged for those services, ultimately, we are legally constrained in what we can do. The court can't be, is prohibited from being user-fee-based. And so while we've been able to successfully, because of previously not-so-lean years, accrue some funds in those accounts, as we've now turned pretty significantly, I mean, $1,145,000 is a huge number that those accounts now, in 2010, have had to bear. Our fund availability has decreased. And so that's why you're seeing the number from 2010, where we used those funds pretty significantly, to 2011, where we're not able to use those funds as much, increase. Does that answer your question?
So those people will now go back on the general fund expenditures?
That's what our budget to you represents, yes, Commissioner?
Well, it's different from last year's budget because it doesn't show the breakdown between probation and everything else like it did on 2010. It's just a general, we don't have classification, Tim. That's why I was asking.
Got it.
There's a million dollars difference.
That's what that represents, Commissioner. Yes, sir.
And you were creative, and we appreciate that, but you don't have as much money to be creative with.
Yeah, and I wish we were different than anybody else. We've done what we can. I hopefully demonstrated that, and we will continue to do more.
Okay.
Can you find a million bucks?
Not yet, but I'll try. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Tim. Okay, that concludes our budget hearing for today. Now, do we have other items on the agenda?
Well, just, our second budget hearings next week start at 9:30 with probate, court courts, prosecutor, and domestics. The following week would be auditor, coroner, treasurer, border revisions, recorder. And then we'll have our investment advisory meeting at 1 o'clock and board correspondence.
I'll move the reading to Wade.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Is there any public comment?
Okay, Madam Clerk, I would like to entertain a motion. I would like to make a motion based on my previous comments that the clerk be authorized to work with the county prosecutor to establish public hearings for the purpose of considering a sales tax for Lorraine County. This does not commit anybody to anything, but it will create the opportunity to discuss the matter.
I'll make the second, but I have comments.
Discussion.
Yeah. Commissioner Blair, I understand. And I think we're all looking at where 2012 is going to be. And if we're going to have sales tax discussions, I think we would need the new commissioner participating in those. And I don't know, Mr. Williams, you're here? If you'd like to come up and give us some view as to what you think in regards to sale tax. I heard the campaign stopped all year, but with Commissioner Blair's introducing it, and you're a month from being here, if you have any comments, good, bad, or otherwise. Because I don't have a problem going through the exercise. But again, passing it or moving forward on it under whatever decision gets made, sending it to the ballot, imposing emergency, I think that would have to be a function of the new board in total.
That's fine if you want to talk. But my intent here is for us to hold the public hearings and make a decision before December 31st of the year.
And that has to be unanimous board, Commissioner. And I don't know where that would be.
Well, and I'm suggesting that we discuss it.
I'm not opposed to discussing it. I'm just not going to commit to enacting an emergency sales tax at this time until I really... You know, like I said earlier in my conversation here, that the numbers have changed dramatically within just the last few months. And, you know, the budget is a living, breathing document, and we can make changes throughout the year if need be, as far as more cuts if necessary.
We're not committing to doing it. We're committing to holding public hearings for the purpose of discussion.
Well, I think it's a good thing to get the information out there for people so they understand that what is at stake if we don't impose a sales tax. So I'm not opposed to those discussions.
Mr. Ennis, is my motion sufficient? Do you need something else?
Commissioners, if we're going to, excuse me, if we're going to go forward and set hearings, we have to have specific proposals as to what the... And you can make alternative proposals as we did last time. But in order for us to publish, we have to publish what the specific proposals are.
Jerry, wouldn't we go forward publishing all six or seven that were available to the Board of Commissioners? Isn't that what we did in the past?
We can do that.
Okay.
Well, I think...
Just the...
Are these all of them previously?
These are the ones we did previously, yes.
Okay, the last time what we did is we passed, we proposed a one-fourth increase for additional revenues for a continuing period of time under 5739.01. We also proposed a half percent increase. And then we did a proposed one-fourth and one-half proposed increase for supporting the criminal administrative justice services. And then we proposed a one-fourth, one-half increase for both combined. So we had actually six different... And then we also had a one-fourth proposal for construction of equipment and facilities for the correctional facility detention home. So we had seven proposals last time.
I knew it was six or seven.
Okay.
Do you want us to consider all seven again?
No, no, I don't. I make the motion, so I would consider the first six. And I would like to ask, all of them are for continuing period of time.
Yes.
I would like to include one for a period of time that's not continuing. I would like to suggest a five-year period of time.
Are you amending your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
So would you like all six to be considered as an alternative five-year rather than continuing? So would you like all six to be considered as an alternative five-year rather than continuing?
No, I want both. I want the ability to craft it however we might choose.
Okay.
Does that agree with you?
That's fine, Commissioner, these are discussions, that's what the public hearings are all about. Please schedule those at an evening meeting also. Because we have to have, what, two?
Well, I mean, the first public hearing, I think I have you set up. I think I had, if, if we went along with, the first actual public hearing would be December eighth. The second public hearing will be December fifteenth.
We have to have just two? I think we had three last time, so we had one in the evening.
We realistically only have to have two, but we can't have as many as we would like prior to those dates. But we have to have those two specifically, so that would be your schedule, in order to get it to the tax commissioner by January twenty-sixth.
And is that to impose, or is that to just put on the ballot, or what?
What you are, what you are doing is passing a motion to consider
Right.
The issues.
To consider?
Part of the reason for having.
Putting it on the ballot or imposing?
Well.
Or nothing.
Or nothing. Okay.
But those are the tax, I mean, sorry, those are the deadlines that we need to be on in order to accomplish all this.
The hearings don't require us to have any action whatsoever, they're just public hearings.
I'm always open for discussion, so I will support that.
If we do. Can we have that one to do in the evening?
Commissioner, what, one evening meeting?
Can we have that one, the fifteenth?
You can have anything, I won't be here.
She's not gonna be here, she's gonna have surgery.
You, you know.
I wanna go have surgery instead.
I know.
Well, can't we do one on the evening morning?
Well, December eighth, it has to be done. Okay, that's your first one, your, your first hearing has to be done December eighth.
Can we do one December eighth in the evening?
You can come back that night if you like.
It gives us the public meeting after the day meeting, then we have the fifteenth for another public meeting.
Correct.
If you'd like, the night of the fifteenth, if you'd like to have another.
Or you can have it any time in between then, it's up to you, but just let me know so I can.
Yes, we'll do them both the same day.
Yeah, we'll do a morning and evening on the eighth.
So your first hearing, I will schedule at... Is ten o'clock okay? We'll get through our board, okay, ten o'clock first period.
And then what time you wanna do it?
On December eighth, and then you wanna go?
Six or six-thirty?
Six o'clock?
Because people, chances come in from work who wanna participate in the discussion.
You have a what? A Cavs game.
All right, so your first hearing will be December eighth at ten AM. Your informal hearing would be that same night, December eighth at six PM. And then your second hearing is scheduled for December fifteenth at ten AM. And we are gonna go with all six minus the last one for the construction, correct? Is that what we're doing, a five-year?
Five and continuing.
Correct, but not, not the last one while we're constructing.
Six, just the six. Twelve, fifteen, what time are we doing, twelve, fifteen?
Ten AM.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want an opportunity to speak, Mr. Williams? It's up to you, you don't have to if you don't want to.
You can speak into the mic if you can't hear it.
You can't hear me? Is my mic, no?
We can, it's like a whisper back there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I said, if you, you're welcome to speak on the subject matter if you're, if you want to.
Well, with the sales tax, my campaign has been that I'm gonna oppose an emergency sales tax increase. I'm here to say that I will impose, or not support an emergency sales tax increase. Sales tax increase hit those that are on fixed incomes. People already said twice that they didn't want it, and talking with over thirty thousand people, those are the people that elected me, and those are the people I'm gonna stand behind.
But you wouldn't be opposed to putting it to the ballot?
What's that?
You wouldn't be opposed to putting it to the ballot?
To bring it to the ballot, and allow them to vote, but I would not do an emergency tax increase.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
And I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Assistant County Administrator and the, uh, county, by Assistant County Prosecutor and the County Administrator.
Second.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.